The Board of Commissioners of the City of Tucson Public Housing Authority will stand in session. Roll call.
Miksanta Cruz.
Here.
Mr Cunningham.
Here, sorry.
Miksulik.
Here, here.
Mrs Lee.
Here.
Mr Fimbres.
Present.
Mr Kazachik.
Here.
Mayor Omero.
Here.
Mr Mohammed. You do have a call, Mayor Honore.
Alrighty, we move on to item two.
Public Housing Authority Monthly Board Report.
City Managers PHA Communication Number Nine dated June 22nd is received into and made part of the record. Is there a motion to approve the monthly board report?
Mayor, I motion to approve the monthly board report as presented.
Second.
There is a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs Lee.
Aye.
Mr Kazachik.
Aye.
Miksanta Cruz.
Aye.
Mr Fimbres.
Aye.
Mayor Omero.
Aye.
Miksulik.
Aye.
Mr Cunningham.
Aye.
The motion to approve the monthly board report passes by a vote of seven zero. Item three.
Public Housing Authority Emergency Housing Vouchers.
City Managers PHA Communication Number Ten dated June 22nd is received into and made part of the record. Did we have a presentation, Ms Monreal?
Yes. Okay. Sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. I had some technical issues and so I'm gonna have to not have my camera on, but I do have a very brief presentation to share today. Let me see if you can see this PowerPoint. Can you see that?
We can.
Wonderful, thank you. So, just a very brief presentation on the HUD Emergency Housing Voucher Program. We were notified that the City of Tucson was eligible to receive 152 Housing Choice vouchers under the Emergency Housing Voucher Program, which is funded through the American Rescue Plan. There's also an additional 30 vouchers for the Pima County Program, which we administer, for a total of 202 vouchers. One of the requirements to accept these vouchers is that this has to be a program that works in coordination with the continuum of care for Tucson and Pima County. And the continuum of care has to have, they have a coordinated entry system which refers families and the four eligible populations are homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, and also those who are recently homeless or have a high risk of housing instability. These vouchers do come with some conditions as I stated, and I wanted to make sure I defined for those who are not familiar with the continuum of care. It is a local planning body that coordinates housing and services for the region. And so, the COC was determined to be by jurisdiction. It's a HUD-required program and there's HUD funding that comes into the area of about $12 million. And the program's designed to promote community-wide commitment to ending homelessness, ensuring that the funding is provided quickly to rehouse homeless individuals and minimize the trauma and dislocation that homelessness causes for individuals, the families, and the communities. It also is to promote access to an effective utilization of programs, and finally, to optimize self-sufficiency for those experiencing homelessness. In Tucson and Pima County, our COC is the Tucson-Pima Collaboration to End Homelessness, which is often referred to as TPCH. Within the COC, HUD mandated not too long ago, in the last few years, a coordinated entry system. And this process is an approach to ensure coordination and management of the city's and county's resources around homelessness, to ensure that decisions are made based on information and efficiently and effectively connecting people to the homeless services. The way we are proposing to utilize the 202 vouchers is in three different ways. One is responding to domestic abuse and assisting those households served through Emerge, which is a nonprofit that provides services and housing for families. We are proposing 50 vouchers for this population. We also know that the vouchers do not come with services, so we believe this would best be used for families and individuals that have moderate service needs. So, we are proposing to commit 52 of those vouchers for unsheltered and temporarily sheltered households that score, have a score based on an assessment that is done by our homeless providers. Finally, we want to unlock the service-rich housing that is very, can be expensive but has high, but serves those who are high need households. And we wanna unblock that pipeline. So, we wanna serve those who are currently in permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing programs with vouchers that have already been housed, and then allow those resources to be used for those who have high needs. And so, we're basically creating a cleaner, a more efficient process to get people into those high need, those service-rich housing resources. And we think 100 vouchers would be best used for that group. HUD is requiring a memorandum of understanding with the continuum of care by July 30th. The continuum of care did approve the Board of TPCH with a draft memorandum that has been provided. The MOU identifies several items, the goals for the program. It identifies who will be serving from the PHA and from the COC, also which are the populations eligible, which I just went over, and finally, the services to be provided, as well as the role and responsibilities. We will do a separate MOU with Emerge Center for Domestic Violence. There are some uniqueness to this program that's different than the regular Housing Choice Voucher Program. There is a decreased requirement on screening related to criminal background, and there's also a requirement of homeless certification, which the COC would be providing. Also, with these vouchers, funding is provided to provide housing search assistance, an ability to increase the payment standard, which means if the rents are higher than what the Housing Authority would normally allow, HUD is saying we can exceed that. We're also hoping to have pre-inspections done so that we have units ready for those who are searching. And we also get additional fees that we don't normally get to help with lease-up and moving costs. Mayor, that is the extent of my presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I do see Councilmember Santa Cruz's hand up, as well as Councilmember Fimbres. Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor, and Liz for bringing this to us today. So, it's my understanding that if we place an individual into housing in the first four months, there are no funding resources for that individual. I'm wondering if we have the capacity to move that quickly, and what barriers might keep folks, you know, on a waiting list for more than four months? Are we like prepared to address this? And then, second, in the approach of unlocking, you know, the service-rich housing for those with higher needs and folks currently, and have folks currently in those slots moving to different programs, have we identified who those individuals might be? And then, how are we communicating this approach to those folks beforehand to, just to make sure that no one's kicked out of a program that they might be?
Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, thank you for those questions. I can tell you that the four months, the Housing Authority, the PHA, we would get an extra $500 if we are able to lease those units up within, those households up within four months. And that is a great incentive to ensure that that happens. But I can say we have the capacity, one of the steps that have been taken with TPCH, they've been doing training with all those service providers related to what they're calling the transfer policy. So, that process is making sure that the agencies understand who are, who are the best candidates for this transfer policy and how that transfer policy happens, and submitting those. So, you know, those are gonna be towards the 100 vouchers, and we believe that could move very quickly, mainly because they're already housed, and all we need to do is change the subsidy. That will, does require a conversation with the household to ensure that that's what they want. I agree, they would not be kicked out of the program, but they would be, have to understand that the funding source and the supports are gonna be a little bit different. So, the household would need to agree to that, to make sure that they understand. For those who are in the rapid rehousing, I think this is a great opportunity for those who need the long-term subsidy, because the rapid rehousing is a limited subsidy. And we know that many of those who've gotten into the rapid rehousing program are not gonna be able to sustain the lease and the rent beyond the time of the program. So, I think for them, it will be very beneficial. Those in permanent supportive housing, that might not be their preference, depending on how their comfort level with their service provider. So, again, it's, it's going to, on the permanent supportive housing side, it will be contingent on the family agreeing to that change. The best part for the permanent supportive housing clients is that if they wanna move outside of Tucson with a voucher, they can do that. Under the permanent supportive housing program, they would not be able to move. So, there is some incentive for them to get a voucher versus staying in permanent supportive housing. Your second question, as far as identifying who those households, I think, I hope I answered that question, but there is some requirements that we're asking. For instance, they should have been in the program at least three years, not had any lease issues, have demonstrated they don't need high level of services. And so, there's some criteria that the agencies would be using. So, I do believe we can move quickly. We're working with Emerge on the 50 families to find out that they have the resources they need to get those families referred with, you know, within the four months. The good thing is, we have the vouchers for 18 months. So, if we don't meet those four months, it really will be around, not because of our inability to get people into the program, but just helping families get eligible in those pieces. So, we'll continue to support and, and make sure that they're, work through very timely, because that is to our advantage to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you. How many vouchers do we totally have for the, for our office or our department, Liz?
So, for the, for the department between City of Tucson and Pima County, we have a total of 6,000, and I'm rounding, 6,000 vouchers, and this program would give us 202 additional vouchers.
I congratulate you on getting these additional 202 vouchers. Now, you said, can the, something about, can the mayor and council be reminded about the HCC will work with Emerge on the other 50 vouchers? Can you give them?
Yes. So, we had, we communicated to see what was, if they could support 50. You know, the Emerge does incredible work with these families, and so, we wanted to make sure what the, if they could handle 50. So, they assured us that they can do that. Now, we just need to work on the steps to make sure it works well for their, for their team and for the families that they serve. So, we don't have all the details mapped out, we will develop that in an MOU.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Yes.
Mayor, you need a motion on this?
Um, I, I, I think we do, actually.
Mayor, do we accept the Public Housing Authority Emergency Housing Vouchers PHA June 22, 21-10?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I do wanna ask something, Liz. These 200 vouchers, will, what is the expiration date on them, and can we keep them?
Right.
If we prove that, you know, that we can give them out quickly enough and that we have the need?
So, interestingly, it's, again, another big difference from what we're used to. So, these vouchers can stay with the families as long as they continue in the program. However, if after, you know, past the 18 months, because this, this funding, these vouchers are good for 18 months, if the family gives it up for whatever reason, say, two years down the road, we will not be able to reissue. Those vouchers will go away. So, they're, once they're connected to a family and it's past the 18-month mark, that stays with the family, but not with the Housing Authority. So, unfortunately, I, I believe it's a funding issue that HUD is committed to these vouchers. It's 70,000 vouchers across the country, but, but it's not a long-term commitment the way they normally do with the regular Housing Choice vouchers.
Well, and I'm thinking after 18 months, we're going to have a, we're gonna need to have a comprehensive plan in terms of how we house the individuals if they're not ready to move on their own. And so, it's a blessing to have these 200 vouchers, but we will have to disclose the term to the families and then make sure that we're working with our nonprofit community to make sure that we're preparing these families or individuals to move out on their own.
Yeah, and, and again, as long as they continue in the program beyond the 18 months, that voucher will stay with them. But, but if, for instance, September 23, if anyone, let's, let's say, we can't reissue after September 2023 any, into any new families. So, as long as that family or individual stays in the program, that voucher can stay with them. So, I was very concerned about that, Mayor, as you, thinking that they would have to have a transition plan, but I've been advised and through the trainings that it does stay with the family as long as they don't leave or, you know, give up the voucher for any reason.
Well, that's good news.
Yes.
Alrighty, so, we have a motion in a second. Mr Clerk Dwee. Mr. Clerk, do we need to do roll call?
You can do a voice vote, Your Honor.
All those in favor, motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four?
Approval of Public Housing Authority Minutes.
City Manager's PHA Communication Number 11, dated June 22, is received into and made part of the record. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 18, 2021 meeting?
So moved, so moved.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham? Mrs. Lee? Ms. Ulick?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
The motion to approve the minutes of the May 18, 2021 meeting passes by a vote of 7-0. Item five?
Adjournment?
The meeting of the Board of Commissioners is adjourned. The mayor and council will now convene at a regular meeting. Okay. Ready, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
Council will stand in session. Let's go to roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Ms. Ulick?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachik?
Here.
Mayor Romero?
Here.
Item two?
Invocation and appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
The invocation will be given by Anna Marrufo, staff member for the City Clerk's Office.
Appointment?
Thank you, Mayor Romero. Dear God, thank you for bringing us to this meeting today. We pray for the government officials gathered here, that you guide them as they make decisions that will affect the lives of Tucson residents. Grant them wisdom to make the right decisions. We pray that the mayor and council members work together to improve the quality of life of all affected by their decisions today. Amen.
Thank you so much, Ms. Marrufo. We are going to do a couple of presentations in honor of Pride Month. I have have the distinct pleasure of having invited our poet laureate, the City of Tucson poet laureate, Mr. TC Talbert, first selected as the Tucson Poet Laureate in 2017, making history in the city of Tucson as our first trans poet laureate who focuses on uplifting the voices of those who are often overlooked and too often silenced. A strong emphasis on the LGBTQ youth and elders, femme-identified people, youth of color, migrants, and refugees. TC has successfully published many times and is not only the Tucson Poet Laureate, but has been named as a Fellow of the Academy of American Poet Laureates. Thank you so much, TC, for coming and joining us again. I am so happy that you're here to give us some of your words of wisdom.
Thank you so much. This is, it's such an honor to be here again. And and thank you, you know, for for holding this space for LGBTQ folks. You know, as I'm, as I'm sure you know, right now, there are over 250 bills that are targeting the LGBT community across the country. And and so knowing that that you all are holding this space and and sending a message to, you know, folks in Tucson that that we're loved and welcomed and supported means the world. So thank you so much. So yeah, I would love to share a piece. And the last time I was able to share, I, y'all had a a way to to share the poem. Is that possible again? Let's see. I also can share my screen if that's better.
Mr. Burke, can we share the screen or have TC share his?
Your Honor, TC should be able to share. We don't have a copy of the poem.
Oh, okay. Okay, let's see here. Well, I don't quite see how to do it, but that's all right. I'll just read. And and this poem, just a little bit of context for this poem. I I got my EMT certification several years ago and through Pima Community College. And and one of the things that was so powerful about that is was really starting to see my body, my trans body, as as holy and as as a part of nature like all the other bodies we were studying. And so this is really a poem that is celebrating my trans body, but also all bodies. And so it's called "My Melissa," Melissa being my birth name. And and so I'll just read it. My Melissa, whose trans body is a house without a hacksaw, a nap inside a needle, a glass vase three-quarter full of smooth stones, whose trans aorta is a mesquite tree careening through power lines, a Cooper's hawk lit by lightning, whose trans lungs are two jars full of bumblebees singing on the uncovered back porch. Even our name is a match tossed into the fire it started. An edgeless invocation, Melissa, a wind made by swinging, grass cutting through concrete, bubble wrap being danced on, albeit slowly, as if that alone could quiet the tiny explosions down the hall. Whose trans articular cartilage is string light threaded through the rafters, whose trans tunica medea is a sliver of decorated cardboard doubling as protest sign inside the window, which only serves to emphasize the window's inefficacy against the sun. Whose trans epiglottis is an apron on a hook, whose trans trapezius are cups in the sink filled with inconsistently directed knives and spoons, whose trans metatarsals are green beans boiling on the stove, whose trans subclavian artery is organ pipe cactus under cloud cover, whose trans left ventricle is a black capped goldfinch hanging upside down to eat, whose trans lesser trochanter is a hen's claw growing around a rope, whose trans urethra sites are dapples of daylight drug across a concrete block wall, whose trans stroke volume is a live-streamed filibuster, whose trans plasma is the intimacy of strangers immediate in an emergency, whose trans plasma proteins are women filling a courtroom one by one approaching the judge, performing all the mental and physical labor of obtaining a divorce. Whose trans femoral vein is a cat's claws crafted search for the sun? I love you now, my trans body, my trans manubrium, my trans Melissa. In every iteration, TC, Melissa, Dawn, who is even once a Harrison, a wife to a husband, it is possible she loved me then too. Hiding, can she hear me say thank you to my trans uterus, my trans pectoralis major? The highest point on earth is in the ocean. Oh, time, how trans you are, a trans prayer, an infinite and exhaustible rhizome of the heart. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. How beautiful. Thank you. And thank you for bringing us your-
Thank you, TC. Beautiful poem.
We love it. Thank you so much, TC. And this is how we start our council regular session of in our of our council meeting, appreciating the beauty of our diversity and the beauty, beauty of our LGBTQ community in Tucson. I do have a presentation of a proclamation. I'd like to declare proclaiming June 2021, the National Caribbean American Heritage Month. And I will read it, read our proclamation and thank our Caribbean American community here in Tucson, Arizona. So with that, whereas since first settling in North America in 1619, Caribbean Americans have positively impacted their communities across the country and throughout our history. They have a long and inspiring story from fighting slavery and segregation to serving and contributing to our country at the highest levels and continue to play an active role in improving our society. Today, roughly 10 million Americans trace their lineage to the Caribbean, a designation that includes Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, Haiti, Dominican Republic, and 26 other countries. Whereas in Tucson, Caribbean Americans make valuable contributions to our economy and larger community each and every day. Many originally came to Arizona to work in our farming and mining industries, key sectors in development of our state's economy. They soon settled in communities across Arizona, raising families and establishing careers as professionals, chefs, educators, doctors, athletes, and business owners. At the same time, Caribbean Americans have strengthened our community through their fight for civil rights, community improvement, and participation in philanthropic programs. Whereas diversity in Tucson is Tucson's greatest strength. If we are to succeed as a city, we must make sure every resident has their best chance at success. Although they were some of our nation's first residents, Caribbean Americans have faced severe challenges as they have worked to live out the American dream. Today, as we work to improve our city and strengthen our community, we must also remain vigilant in supporting our Caribbean American neighbors and embracing their rich heritage. We are proud to stand with them and celebrate their contributions to our country and our community. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, Mayor of the City of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 to be National Caribbean American Heritage Month in honor of the diverse backgrounds and the contributions of the of Caribbean American residents. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this 22nd day of June 2021, hereby recognizes the Arizona Caribbean Cultural Association during National Caribbean American Heritage Month. Thank you all so much and congratulations. And we love to be able to recognize our Caribbean American community. With that, we are moving into appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would I appoint Mr. Bobby Hadamio as the Ward Five Representative to Cewak? I'll be following up with a memo with his information.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Fimbres. Mr. Clerk, can you please read item 2D?
Item 2D is appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
City Manager's Communication 179, dated June 22, is received into and made part of the record. I need a motion to approve the appointments of Eli Nelson to the Landscape Advisory Committee, Mary Brindley to the Small Minority and Women-owned Business Commission, and Leana Perez to the Tucson Police and Fire Public Safety Personnel Retirement System.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. I would like to thank Eli Nelson and Mary Brindley, as well as Leana Perez, for your willingness to serve our city. Are there any further discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three?
Mayor and council reports summary of current events.
Alrighty, so this particular item, there's usually, most of council likes to share. So we'll start with Ward One and then come down the line according to our wards. So Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to let the public know that, as mentioned earlier in the study session, that we will be hosting along with Ward Five and some of our county partners, an eviction prevention fair tomorrow, June 3, from 3 to 7 PM at the El Pueblo Center at 101 West Irvington Road. This coming Thursday, we're also celebrating Dia de San Juan Fiesta at 9:46 West Mission Lane from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. It's hosted by Mission Garden, Menlo Park Neighborhood Association. There'll be food vendors, the garden will be open to the public, and then we'll have we'll have music and and special highlights during that time. And then finally, this Friday, we have the Fugas Bicicletida del Sur at El Pueblo Center at 6, from 6 to 8:30 PM, which is a monthly critical mass ride that's family-friendly that happens in the South Side. Every Friday, every Friday once a month. So y'all are invited. That's Friday, June 25. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Your Honor, I want to congratulate both the Arizona softball team and the Arizona baseball team on successful seasons navigating their way to the College World Series. Right before we went into COVID, we actually got to host Coach Candrea at a council member meeting, at a council meeting. I want to wish him a hearty congratulations in his retirement and best wishes. His contribution to our community is 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 unmatched sometimes. So I wish him the best and again, proud of of the girls of the softball team and the boys who played or the men, the women and men, the women of the softball team and the men of the baseball team at the University of Arizona, who have represented our community well.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ulick? Thank you, Mayor Romero. I want to thank Councilmembers Santa Cruz and Fimbres for hosting the eviction event in partnership with the county. I just also want to make sure that Ward Three residents and anybody in the city call our office if you have any questions or want to help, want any help linking to resources, the number is 791-4711. I know we all want to mobilize to help prevent evictions in this community. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Ulick. Vice Mayor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things from Ward Four. Our next town hall is actually happening on Thursday, this coming Thursday, June 24 at 5:30 PM. It'll be with the Houghton South Neighborhood Association, which includes Savano, Sierra Morado, and Saguaro Trails. Information about that can be found on the website, tucsonaz.gov/wardfour. And then everyone, please mark your calendars for the annual Ward Four Back-to-School Bash. This year will be drive-through format to keep distance in place because of COVID continuing pandemic. That'll be Saturday, July 24, 8 AM to 10 AM. So more details will be coming out from there, but please save the date. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fimbres?
Thank you, Mayor. Sunday, May, June 20 was Father's Day. And I want to wish all the fathers and grandfathers a happy Father's Day. I'd like to congratulate Al Rio Health, who announced today that they had given 21,000 COVID-19 vaccines to patients in the community and the homeless. Thank you, Al Rio, for your continued work for our community. City of Tucson has received an especial achievement in GIS Award from ASRI, the company that supplies GIS technology for the Poverty and Urban Stress website and the Poverty and Urban Stress Report. I want to thank former Council, Ward Five Councilwoman Mary Fimbres, Melinda Jacobs, and Mark Kirk for their work on the original 2027 Poverty and Urban Stress Report. I want to thank Ana Sanchez, formerly with HCD on her work with the 2012 Poverty and Urban Stress Report that was accepted and approved. I want to thank my Ward Five council staff, their work on the 2020 Poverty and Urban Stress Report. I want to thank HCD- I want to thank HCD Director Liz Morales and Laura Sharp and Allison Miller with ACT for their work on the report and the website. City of Tucson Poverty and Urban Stress Report is a living document that helps our city track statistics, demographics, and efforts to make our community a better place to live, work, and raise a family. The City of Tucson recently won the Waylard National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation for Cities with Populations Between 300,000 and 599,000. The challenge is an annual campaign presented by the Wayland Foundation and Toyota with support from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, National Leagues of Cities, and other partners to promote environmental sustainability, water, and resource resiliency. In April, Tucson, in April, Tucson Mayor Regina Romero called on community members to pledge to conserve water and other resources, and they promised to save 50 million gallons of water. Congratulations to Mayor Romero on her effort, city staff, and their work in our community for taking this winning pledge. The Gallego Research Fair and COVID-19 vaccine event took place Saturday, June 19th at Gallego Intermediate Fine Arts School, Ward Five, which I have my office, we're cosponsors with the Pima County Health Department. Rental utility assistance, food distribution, health information, and free COVID-19 vaccines to those in attendance. 12-year-olds and elders were given. More than 100 people received the vaccine. Congratulations to Gallego School and their outreach and the Pima County Health Department for their work on this health department. I also want to thank Supervisor Matt Heinz, Dr. Matt Heinz, for his work on this. I look forward to working with Pima County Health Department on the next event for our community. An eviction prevention resource fair will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, June 23rd, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at El Pueblo Senior Center, 101 West Irvington. The event will connect people facing a possible eviction with community resources that may help them remain in their homes. Information on paying overdue utilities will also be available. For reference, you can go online to tucsonpmaep.com or call 831-292-4308. Or you can call Ward One or Ward Five because we're also helping to co-sponsor it. I want to thank Governor Ducey and the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality announced Monday, June 21st, a $2 million estate funding to help Tucson Water restart the treatment plant that was forced to shut down because of severe groundwater contamination. A new state funding will fast-track efforts to bring the Tucson Airport remediation plan, TARP, back online and safely continue treating contaminated groundwater in the area. The $2 million from the estate will expedite TARP safely back online and prevent the plume on groundwater contamination from spreading outside of the treatment zone. Today, Tucson Water spent over $8 million to address PPOS locally, contained to test all drinking water sources for the compounds across its 390-square-mile service area, turning off contaminated wells and drilling new ones in clean areas, removing PPOS at TARP. The utility is spending means more to make connections to the reclaimed system. The City of Tucson has filed a lawsuit against the manufacturers of PPOS compounds and will pursue all of its available legal remedies to obtain some reimbursements on all of the cities and now ADQ expenses for those and other potential responsible parties. Mark your calendars on Saturday, July 31st for the team's 10th Annual Arizona Balengo Kids Expo to take place in Tucson Convention Center from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. For more information, you can go online to arizona-balengo.com. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres. Councilmember Kazatchek?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thanks.
Alrighty. So I want to especially recognize our council colleagues and our city manager and all of our team here in the City of Tucson. We just passed our Father's Day celebration on Sunday. I hope you had a restful and wonderful day off. And I hope you were pampered by your family and friends and glad to have you all as colleagues and celebrate you as a parent. June is a very special month because besides celebrating Father's Day and LGBTQ+ Awareness Month, we also celebrate, well, not celebrate, but want to bring attention to gun violence. And it's, June is Gun Violence Awareness Month. Since the start of COVID-19, there has been a nationwide increase in the frequency of gun violence throughout the nation, and that's including here in Tucson. Gun violence disproportionately affects low-income communities as well as communities of color, making it also an issue of racial justice. During the month of June, I encourage Tucsonans not only to wear orange to honor all the victims and survivors of gun violence and raise awareness on the gun violence epidemic in our country, but also to take action, also to let your elected representatives in every level of government, city, county, state, and federal, that it is time to act on reasonable gun violence prevention measures and laws that can help prevent gun violence in our country. So I encourage you to not just raise the awareness, but to take action to make a change for this horrible epidemic that we have in our country. So with that, we are moving to item four.
City Managers' Report Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 181 dated June 22nd is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to highlight something that Councilman Fimbres included in his report, which is the Poverty and Urban Stress Report. Just really thank him. I know he really pushed hard to get that accomplished. And although we did get an award, thanks for his leadership in moving that forward. So thank you, Councilmember. Also, I've had several questions about our fireworks. We did send out an email letting you know how we're preparing for that to keep everyone safe. I'm very confident that we will be able to do that. I know that our TFD staff is working very closely. And I also wanted to make sure that we thanked our sponsor again this year, Desert Diamond Casinos. We appreciate them. This is the 24th Annual Desert Diamond Casino-sponsored fireworks event. So thank you to the tribe and making sure that they know how much we appreciate it. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Madam Mayor, I think we should send a letter to Len Norris, the chairman, and Wayverly to thank them again for their strong support.
Yes, absolutely. They always come through for our fireworks for the Fourth of July, and we're absolutely appreciative of them making it special for City of Tucson residents to enjoy our fireworks display. Last year, as you all know, that we didn't have a Fourth of July because of our concerns of gatherings. But now, we are happy to be able to, once again, have our traditional Fourth of July fireworks. So looking forward to it. We move on to item five.
Liquor License Applications Report from the City Manager.
City Manager's Communication 182 dated June 22nd is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, in this evening's liquor license agenda under item 5B, we have one request for a new license, one request for personal location transfer. Staff has indicated that both applicants are in compliance with city requirements. An appropriate motion would be forward items 5B 1 and 2 to the State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
There's a motion? There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for no more than 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. See? I have Ms. Karen Green. Mr. Clerk, do we have Ms. Karen?
Yes, Your Honor.
Right. Ms. Green? Ms. Green?
No, it's not.
Is she on mute, Mr. Clerk?
Can you hear me now? Can you?
Yes, we can. We can hear you, Ms. Green. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. My name is Karen Green, and I'm a resident of the Dunbar Spring neighborhood and a member of the Barrio Neighborhood Coalition, and tonight I represent myself. Last fall, when you were voting to approve the Central Business District for another 10 years, enough people expressed concerns about this that you decided you needed to get more public input. I looked forward to attending one of the meetings you set up. I sent my questions in ahead of time. I was impressed that the person facilitating the meeting was not from Tucson, so they wouldn't have any kind of hidden agenda. However, she facilitated the heck out of that meeting. It was so clamped down, there was not any opportunity to ask questions. The only input you could give was whether you liked A or B better, but no chance to say neither, I would rather C or D. The chat box exploded because there was no other way to actually give any public input. I even filled out the post-event survey, figuring I could ask my questions but never got answered there. Nope, not a place to put unanswered questions. There was a stakeholders group digging deeper into the issues. Surely, the Barrio Neighborhood Coalition would be asked to nominate members of the impacted barrios to be a stakeholder. No contact, no impacted residents on the committee. Lots of developers and investors, though. Some of the impacted neighborhoods on the new expansion map were contacted for a 10-minute presentation about what it means to be on the map, what the Central Business District is, and what a G-Plat project means. 10 minutes is enough time to understand all of this, enough to even know what questions you should be asking. It's taken me years to be able to understand this stuff enough to explain it to another person. Oh, and some neighborhoods were never contacted, so they didn't even realize they were on the map. And if you live in a place without an active neighborhood association, then it's just too bad for you. A new map was created, and I was surprised to hear that additional sections of Dunbar Spring were added to this map. One parcel in particular was of concern, the one at 11th Avenue and First Street. This parcel was given to the city under an agreement with the Salvation Army in the neighborhood that there would be an affordable housing project in perpetuity built there. More than a decade later, we're still waiting for that project. When I heard this site was on the map, I got in touch with our current contact in the Housing Department to express my concern. Especially since I've heard that G-Plats aren't used for affordable housing projects, and the only reason for an area to be on the map is to be eligible for a G-Plat. So why put this land on the map? I was told by my incontact, I had a conversation with Economic Initiatives on it and let them know we have concrete plans to move forward with affordable housing on that site. They are aware. So imagine my surprise in our neighborhood meeting when someone asked the representative from the Economic Initiatives Department why this parcel was on the map, and they acted as if this was the first they had heard of it. Dunbar Spring asked to be removed from the map, but no reply was sent. I only found out we were removed when I looked at the included agenda items. I ask that you don't approve the map and you put a moratorium on any G-Plats that don't substantially increase the affordable housing stock in Tucson. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. And surprisingly, that was the only speaker for for Call to the Audience. So we're moving on to item seven. We have other substantial speakers for item eight and a budget. So I don't know who's speaking, but we we don't have any other written names for item six, which is Call to the Audience. Mr. Clerk, did you get any other requests?
Not for Call to the Audience, Your Honor.
Okay. I don't know who's speaking, but please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Karen Potter. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Potter. Which item do you want to speak to?
I apologize, Mayor Romero. I've been trying to speak during the Call to the Audience. I think there was an issue with my muting offline and not showing up in your system. But if there's time now, I'd love to just provide a couple of brief comments if possible.
Alrighty, and this is not about any of the other public hearings that we have tonight?
This is regarding item number 10 relating to the EV Building Code.
Alright, we have a separate public hearing for that, Ms. Potter. So you would have to wait for that public hearing?
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, we're going to make sure that we call on you for that particular public hearing, okay?
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, hold on. Ready, let's move on to item seven. Mr. Clerk?
Consent Agenda Items A through O.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the Consent Agenda Items.
Your Honor, this evening's Consent Agenda Item A is Approval of Minutes. Item B is Transportation Adoption of the Alamo Wash Management Plan. Item C is Rural Property Sale of Surplus City Property Located at the Southwest Corner of Cole Road and Escalante Road. Item D is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for reimbursement of humanitarian aid expenditures through the Federal Emergency Management Agency Emergency Food and Shelter Program. Item E is Tucson Code Amending Chapter 10 Fiscal Year 2020 Compensation Plan Schedules. Item E is Tucson Code, oops, item F, sorry, is the elections calling a special election for May 17th, 2022. Item G is Finance Reallocation of Funds for the Ward Five Fiscal Year 2021 Office Budget Surplus to the Metropolitan Education Commission, Job Path, Tucson Fire Department, and Transportation. Item H is Finance Reallocation of Funds for the Ward Four Fiscal Year 2021 Office Budget Surplus for the Improvements to Lincoln Regional Park. Item I is a final plat S 21004, Houghton Reserve Blocks 1 and 2, lots 1 through 227, Common Areas A1 through A6, B1 through B4, C, D1 through D5, E, F1 through F3. Item J is a final plat King Avenue, lots 1 through 2. Item K is a final plat Palaverdy, lots 1 through 2. Item L is a labor agreement extension with the Tucson Police Officers Association. Item M is a resolution declaring that notwithstanding House Bill 2011, 2111, and Arizona Revised Statute Section 1-272, federal laws or regulations. Item N is the City Magistrate Reappointment of City Magistrates and Fixing Compensation. Item O is Boards, Committees, and Commissions Extending the Term of Service for the Pedestrian Advisory Committee Amending Resolution Number 22796. Your Honor, the city attorney would like to read some additional language into the record.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to Consent Item D, as in David, a correction to the mayor and council communication only. The communication will be revised to reflect that the amount that Pima County has received in advance funding through FEMA is $2,126,370.72. The IGA has it correct, but we needed to correct it within the mayor and council communication. And also to clarify that, under the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement, Pima County will make payments, reimbursements to the city up to the amount of $545,700. And that's for the reimbursement of our humanitarian food and shelter expenditures. We read corrections with respect to items E and G earlier during the study session, and we will take care of those administratively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. So may I have a motion? Do we have the motion, or may I have a motion to the consent?
Yes, items on consent with the corrections noted.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Let's go to roll call.
Ms. Ulrich?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Kazatchek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of seven. The items on the Consent Agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0. Item 8.
Public Hearing Amending Tucson Code Chapter 27 relating to the implementation of a differential rate structure for Tucson Water customers located in unincorporated Pima County. This item is continued from the meeting of June 8, 2021, ordinance number 11846.
City Manager's Communication Number 198, dated June 22, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a proposed new differential rate structure for Tucson Water customers located in unincorporated Pima County. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. I do have a list of speakers, but I did want to open up the conversation with City Manager and City Council colleagues' commentary and opening up the items. So are there any of my colleagues that wish to be heard? Alright, hearing done. We do have many of the speakers that decided to to come to the public hearing from the last meeting. I have the list of all of the carryovers from the June 8 meeting, so I will be calling on these speakers first. But just like I did on June 8 and allowed my colleague on the Board of Supervisors to speak first, I am going to offer the same benefit to Supervisor Matt Heinz. He does have a representative present because he was unable to personally come to the public hearing. So I'd like to call on Kylie Walzak, behalf Supervisor Matt Heinz.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I am Kylie Walzak. I am a staff aide in District 2 for Supervisor Matt Heinz. Thank you for allowing us to speak this statement into the record on behalf of the supervisor tonight. Dear Mayor Romero and Council members, I am writing to you today to express my support for the proposal to adopt differential water rates for Tucson Water customers in unincorporated Pima County, and I hope you are able to read this statement into the public record during your deliberations on the issue this evening. The district I represent, Pima County District 2, is largely incorporated and most households are served by Tucson Water. Many of the neighborhoods in my district are economically disadvantaged, and due to a lack of green space and tree canopy, temperatures typically reach levels that are 10 to 12 degrees hotter than areas further north, particularly during extreme heat waves like the one we just experienced over the past week. This is a question of equity. The residents of District 2 should not be subsidizing water for residents who choose to live outside of incorporated areas of our community. At the same time, I believe that this decision should be based on data. Therefore, I encourage you to conduct a cost-of-service study that takes into account the price of labor, maintenance, and laying of pipes in addition to the cost of pumping water to higher elevations and more distant areas of unincorporated Pima County. As I wrote to you in my letter on this issue on April 2, I would like to see the funds raised from a differential fee structure be used to provide payment assistance to low-income households that are currently struggling to pay their bills, both in incorporated and unincorporated areas, and to those that would be affected by the differential rate, so people who are unable to afford the increase would be left unharmed. As we suffer through record heat and mega drought, it is vital that we develop sensible policies that are harmonious with the climate in which we live. I firmly believe that one of these policy goals should be limiting urban sprawl, and I see differential water rates as a strong tool for encouraging sustainable development inside our existing urban footprint. Indeed, it is a policy already employed by most cities across the state, including in Phoenix, where unincorporated residents pay 50% more for their water. If we do not pursue policies that curtail our use of resources and encourage conservation, we will not be able to sustain life in this environment. Therefore, at its core, this is a question of protecting public health. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Dr. Matt Heinz, Supervisor District 2.
Thank you, Kylie. We really appreciate Supervisor Heinz coming today and you reading his statement into the record. We also have from our previous meeting, Corinne Cooper. And I just want to remind our callers that you have to press star 6 in order to unmute yourself if you are on mute. So Corinne.
I believe I'm unmuted.
Corinne?
Corinne.
Corinne, okay. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Corinne Cooper, and I'm a resident of the city of Tucson Ward 3. I've lived here for almost 30 years. I'm a water harvester, and I also carry 60 gallons of gray water into my garden every week. I have a desert garden, and I'm well aware of the water crisis that's facing the city. I also own land in the Tucson Mountains, where I was unable for years to build a home because Tucson Water refused to serve our area, despite the pleas of the residents. At the same time, water was being provided to developers in other parts of the county. In 2004, as wells began to dry up, owners in that neighborhood began to plan to obtain city water. In 2008, Tucson Water required us to spend a total of $1.2 million on infrastructure, including a pumping station to obtain water service. We paid $25,000 per hookup, which did not include a meter, any plumbing to obtain water, or a single drop of water. If you owned a parcel that could be subdivided, you were required to buy more than one hookup. In my case, I was required to buy two. I had no choice in this, as my savings were invested in this land, and it was essentially worthless without water. The entire infrastructure purchased by this group was then donated to Tucson Water in exchange for the right to obtain city water. So it was shocking to me to hear Tucson Water report that the cost of serving residents in the outlying areas of the county was being borne by residents of the city of Tucson. Clearly, Tucson Water is not telling the council the entire truth about their practices. It is unconscionable to require residents to invest in infrastructure and then complain that we are not paying our fair share for water services. I want to reiterate that I'm in favor of measures that encourage and even enforce moderate and responsible water usage. But this policy is not that. No cost-of-service city has been done, and no impact research has been shown. The measure as proposed is purely political, and I ask you to vote no for that reason.
Thank you, Corinne. Harold Thomas? Harold Thomas?
Looks like he disconnected, Your Honor.
Okay, Roxana Valenzuela? Do you see Roxana Valenzuela, Mr. Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Alrighty, Angel Brialt?
No, Your Honor.
Bill Conklin?
No, Your Honor.
Miranda Schubert?
Yes, Your Honor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Miranda.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Hi, Mayor and Councilpeople of Tucson. My name is Miranda Schubert. I'm an unpaid speaker and a renter in Armory Park in Ward 6. Thanks for the opportunity to share some thoughts. I'm calling in support of the Our Water Tucson proposal to implement differential rates for residents living outside city limits. A climate emergency was declared last year, and if the word "emergency" means anything, it means that urgent action is demanded now, and that business as usual is no longer acceptable. Money is only one cost to consider. The environmental expense of continuing to do nothing to keep urban sprawl and water usage in check does not have a dollar amount. It's far more costly than that. It's also inhumane to make over 10,000 working families pay approximately $3 million in water debt that has accrued since the pandemic hit. Mayor and Council, you have the opportunity to demonstrate visionary leadership by baking into the policy a requirement that the revenue from the differential rates be applied to not only canceling the water debt, but also expanding support and access to low-income assistance programs for working families, as well as drastically increasing investment and climate resiliency programs across the city to support green infrastructure, rainwater harvesting, and tree planting. Public service means balancing leadership with representation. Representation has to do with making sure that you're connecting with and hearing from a wide range of constituents and trying your best to make decisions that honor the lived experiences of the people who are most impacted. It's the job of elected officials such as yourselves to think about the people who don't have the time or privilege to complete surveys or call into meetings or attend town halls because they're too busy putting food on the table and making rent. The official part that needs to be balanced with that representation piece says that you have a basic responsibility to safeguard the health, safety, and well-being of the people, with an awareness that equity and sustainability must be meaningfully considered in all of your decisions. Councilmember Cunningham astutely noted in a guest opinion piece in the Arizona Daily Star in April that the proposed differential rates could be used to help fund adaptation and mitigation to the impacts of climate change in an equitable manner. That would benefit all residents of Tucson and Pima County. What do our decisions say about our priorities as a city? Your courage and leadership is called for in this moment. Please vote in approval of Our Water Tucson. Let's stop giving away our most precious resource for so little. And let's help lift up working families by ensuring that the revenue goes towards the water debt, expanding low-income assistance programs, and climate resiliency measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Brayton Brandis. And I just want to remind our speakers that they need to give us their name if they live inside the city of Tucson, and if they're a paid speaker or not. So Brayton Brandis.
No, Your Honor.
Brittany Aragon?
No, Your Honor.
Cesar Aguirre?
No, Your Honor.
Diana Davenport?
No, Your Honor.
Elizabeth Sparks?
No, Your Honor.
Garrett Kawaleski?
Yes, Your Honor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm not a paid speaker. I'm about one-eighth of a mile from the city border, and I'm against this initiative. I live here just like you, and I'm a customer just like you. I'm only as much of an urban sprawler as anyone else that has a house. What I've been hearing is essentially that the water belongs to you, city residents, merely one-eighth of a mile from my house, and not to me. So you want me to pay more than my fellow Tucsonans. But you're a monopoly, and you're my only option. Water is the most essential thing for life, more than food. The point of most governance is to aggregate the cost of services needed for our survival and safety and to provide those services and charge them equally among all citizens, not an us-versus-them mentality. Siphoning more money from the out-group and giving it to the in-group is not how we should be. We're beholden to the city just as residents are. If I use one drop of water, my drop of water is equal to the same drop of water used by people living in midtown. Unlike roads and bridges where you might charge more for those that actually use them more, because we already pay more if we use more water. Differential rates also effectively discriminate against those that don't have the right to vote on city matters to begin with. It's punishment in a way to treat us differently. Virtually everybody that is in favor of the differential rates is within the city, the people who are deciding against those that are the out-group. What a government chooses to do for or to its residents is a reflection of their values. Charging us more for the same one drop of water would tell us you value us less than other citizens and customers. It's not like choosing to go to the zoo, where maybe a discount might make sense when the city paid for the zoo by themselves, and they maintain the zoo by themselves. If you charge more for water, it should be for every customer. This is a matter of infrastructure and pumps. So we would essentially be subsidizing pump number 1, pump number 2, and pump number 3 in order to get pump number 4 to send the water to us. Applying that logic, people who live halfway between any two pumps should pay more than those who live right next to the first pump or the second pump because they're closer to the pump. Let that sink in, that charging more based on the distance from the pump is essentially what it is. Would you choose to charge on a graduated scale depending on how far away the water source is from the nearest pump rather than just us? Should anyone pay more for firefighting services if you live further away from the fire department? Or bus services if you live further away from the school? Or military services if you live further away from the military, if we lived near the coast or from near a military base? Or for Border Patrol since we live near a border? Or police services if you live further away from the police station? Or voter mailing costs if we live further away from a post office? These things are not done that way, and this, I think, falls into the same category, and it's an even more essential service than the post office. The argument that it's subjective, or the argument that it's a small increase does not negate the broader context that I'm trying to establish. Fairness is a subjective matter. Please judge well. We are at your mercy. We have no say other than to just talk to you, and we hope you make the decision not to charge a differential rate. This would be seen as tyranny of the majority against those who have no true representation in their government making the decision. We have to rely on your good faith and judgment, and please, please do so well. And I have a separate, well, I'll leave that alone. There was a separate issue I wanted to bring up, but it's not the right time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kawaleski. Hattie?
You came close. It's actually, you came close.
Did I? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's pretty good, actually.
Kawaleski, Kawaleski?
Kawaleski, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hattie Hauser?
No, Your Honor.
James Hanley?
No, Your Honor.
Jennifer Earl?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Ms. Earl.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jennifer Earl. I'm a county resident, and tonight I represent myself. I'm speaking tonight to oppose the adoption of a differential rate structure for water users from unincorporated county areas. I am not the first or the only person to oppose these differential rates. The Citizen Water Advisory Committee has voted against it for many of the same reasons I will point to tonight. The city proposal has also been criticized in the media for the same reasons. I was waiting to speak at the last meeting, and I suspect many more would have been based on community postings in a group that I'm on if they had been aware of this potential measure. I want to make several points tonight. First, from the online presentation, there were three justifications given, and all are quite weak. For instance, according to the online presentation, there is a 7% differential in asset use between city users and unincorporated county users. But how that is calculated, or the cost of it, is not described, explained, or quantified, particularly quantifying the cost of that differential use, making it impossible to know how this number was calculated or what the costs associated with that differential are. Larger level of water consumption, the 3 HCF per month differential between county and average city users is already being paid for through escalating water usage rates for all users. The third reason, the differential use and septic use, could be handled by increasing charges for septic system users only in an amount that offsets whatever the opportunity costs are for that one-time water use. In any case, there's no evidence that Tucson Water is losing money by servicing unincorporated county residents or that new funds were needed to cover these uses. My second point is that it does not seem that the increases being suggested are at all connected to these three justifications. If they were, it would be very reasonable to see cost estimates associated with each of these three justifications and a recommendation of a plan that recovers precisely those costs. and a recommendation of a plan that recovers precisely those costs. Instead, this seems to actually be about two things. One, punishing unincorporated residents, hoping that this will increase pressure to incorporate, and two, raising funds by charging people who cannot vote against those who vote for it, the mayor and city council. My third point is that it appears that Tucson Water wants to make more money to expand programs without asking the city council for more money. As a result, the city has devised a way of charging more to a group of people who pays for them but can't vote against the city council or mayor. This is supported by the polling question at the end of the feedback survey that asks people to rank how the money raised from this will be used. None of the options focus on paying for the justifications that Tucson Water gave for raising the costs. I personally support water conservation, canceling water debt, et cetera, but if these are the actual priorities, then the city should be considering an overall rate increase, not a rate increase on only those payers who cannot vote for or against the people who pass that measure. My fourth point is that targeting a group that you can extract money from but who cannot do anything about it is not an essentially good way to govern, and it is not courageous or brave or taking a stand in favor of conservation and anti-inequality measures. Consider how you would feel if someone could raise rates on something that your household depends on fundamentally, and for which you have no other provider, but you have absolutely no representation to that body. That does not represent good community values, or at its base, good democracy. It is essentially a way of preying on a group of people who have no ability to vote against those who voted for this measure. My fifth point is, if the idea is to encourage incorporation, which many of the documents and the discussion at the last suggested it is fundamentally about, then targeting individual households is a terrible way to accomplish that goal. As an individual homeowner, I have no direct say or way to move forward about incorporation. So punishing me for not incorporating cannot motivate me to act because I don't know how to act, where to act, what to do. Working with the county and community leaders on incorporation, though, would perhaps lead to increased chances of incorporation. My sixth point is that it would be possible, as was pointed out in the last meeting, to do this differential rate on only new construction. That would likely motivate developers around incorporate, that would likely motivate developers who might be better able to leverage support for incorporation, and at least potential homeowners would be forewarned. Further, I support water conservation, but it's really not what's happening about here. This is about raising money from people who can't vote against you. To close, if you're going to do this, I implore you to do, I implore you to do the least you can, the smallest increase possible, and to do it through the tiered water use, not an across-the-board increase, and not the largest increases, which at least that would be less predatory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Jennifer Skinner.
No, Your Honor.
Julie St. John.
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Ms. St. John?
Thank you so much. My name is Julie, my name is Julie St. John. Tucson became my adopted hometown over 30 years ago, and I live in Ward 6. I represent myself. I do not envy you making a decision on this divisive issue. I listened two weeks ago to the speakers for and against the proposed differential rate. For almost every person who spoke against it, I heard that it wasn't fair, and that concept resonated with me as a former child whose opinion was at times discarded or not even heard. For those that expressed support of this proposal, I heard many arguments that also resonated with me because I'm one of those people who have tattooed their yard and their car with signs about protecting the rights and lives of the underserved, the underrepresentative, I present, I can't say it, and the disadvantaged, whether we're talking about human beings or the desert we call home. I think this is a first step in the right direction, and I support it. For far too long, the city and the county have bent over backwards to promote development. A friend of a friend once said that growth is the ideology of a cancer cell, and development paired with a rapidly changing climate is going to kill Tucson if we don't make radical changes. Radical doesn't mean impossible. It means thinking outside the box, like having a program that plants a million water harvesting systems, targeting the neighborhoods where people are most in need, and giving discounts to the rest of us. The city would get great feedback, feedback from nonprofits like the Watershed Management Group, who are smart about creating cost-effective programs that promote people working together for a common goal. I heard one man say at the last meeting how he despaired that this issue, and others like it, I would imagine, have divided our city. I wholeheartedly share his grief. I hope, as we move forward, that we find harmony in working together as a community to save our desert home for our children and our children's children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St. John. Larry Odsley.
No, Your Honor.
Linda Evans.
No, Your Honor.
Luis Salgado.
No, Your Honor.
Maurice Magaña.
No, Your Honor.
Light, oh, I'm sorry, Mike King.
Yes, Your Honor.
For this opportunity to speak with you, and I only have a few comments that echo some of the previous comments. This, this, so some of the rationale with respect to these rates for that it promotes conservation, my thinking is it doesn't really do that if you are allowing some residents to not pay for water or to pay much lower rates for water. That's point one. It was also said that this measure would encourage incorporation, but that doesn't really ring true to me either, because as Corinne's experience was, the cost of the water itself is not a cost borne by the developers of the properties, and there's a relatively small cost in a new development. And I forgot the woman's name, but she talked about there are a number of residents that live in the county. I guess I should have said I live in the county, and I represent myself as well. Number of residents that live in the county that are on sewer, and we pay sewer fees. So, you know, that's, that wouldn't be equitable either to raise rates on us, because we do return water to the city. You know, that's one of the rationales that the cost should go up. This feels like an unfair tax on those customers that just, you know, have the unfortunate circumstance of living in Pima County. These types of wealth redistribution taxes drive the residents then that can pay away from the city. So it seems like, you know, these types of policies are bad for that reason. And my last point is, the survey said somewhere around 70% of the people that responded were against this proposal, but it's odd to me that most of the people talking over this meeting and the last are in support. So I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Ms. Moira Alexander.
Yes, Your Honor.
Moira Alexander. Hi, Ms. Alexander.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Moira Alexander, and I live in Ward 5, and I'm not a paid speaker. I support the Our Water Tucson platform and option number four, the 40% differential rate, as do several local organizations, businesses, and thousands of individual Tucsonans. This initiative will raise $27 million that should be used to cancel the water bill debt for 15,000 families who have been unable to pay their bills, lower water bills for low-income families in Tucson and in unincorporated Pima County, expand the low-income assistance program, and invest in climate resiliency programs. The American Public Health Association states that access to safe drinking water is necessary to ensure public health and is a human right. Many folks have reached a breaking point in being able to afford basic utilities, and now we're at a crossroads that they need to mitigate climate change as well. Our neighbors need assistance now, and many will continue to need assistance in the future to continue to have access to basis services like water. The economic impacts of the pandemic, wage stagnation, and inflation are ongoing and contribute to the difficulty many face in being able to afford current bills and making up for past due bills. We have to understand that it's going to take some much longer than others to recover economically. Late fees and shut-offs affect our neighbors' physical and mental health. This for many people is in addition to the psychological toll and undue stress caused by a variety of events in the last few years, especially this last year. The American Public Health Association also warns that the economic burden of maintaining water systems should not unduly burden low-income and rural populations. The changes being proposed will increase the revenue for water rates, but currently the needs of the system are not being met. People who live outside of the city should pay for the additional cost of the infrastructure it takes to serve those areas, except for folks who are economically stressed. As a city, as Tucsonans, we must plan to pay for required infrastructure maintenance and improvements to ensure everyone in Tucson has access to clean, safe drinking water, and to invest in climate resiliency programs that will help us to conserve our precious resources in the long run. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Nancy Rubenthal. Nick Breckenfeld.
No, Your Honor.
Paul Bon, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm sure I'm not going to pronounce this right. Paul Bonait, Bonato.
No, Your Honor.
Rachel Wilson.
No, Your Honor.
Sophia Ochoa.
No, Your Honor.
Susie Chavez.
No, Your Honor.
Tanya Nunez.
No, Your Honor.
Timoteo Padilla.
No, Your Honor.
Ibrahim Alan Sari.
No, Your Honor.
William Saltas.
Yes, Your Honor.
William Saltas.
Hello?
Mr. Saltas.
Yes.
Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you for taking my call. My name is Bill Saltas. I live in the unincorporated foothills, and I have listened to the presentations on June 8th and tonight, and I've heard multiple statements about equality and charity. What I have not heard is equality for the Arizona citizens that have lived in the unincorporated areas for years. Our country showed what they, what their opinion is about taxation without representation, which is what this proposal is. I believe a better solution could be developed by people of goodwill not looking to scapegoat any group. Thank you for taking my call.
Thank you, Mr. Saltas. Tracy Gallagher.
Yes, Your Honor.
Tracy?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Trace Gallagher, and I'm a lifelong Tucsonan resident, having mostly resided in Ward 6, and I am not a paid speaker. It has been said many times during these hearings that the budget is a moral document. I wholeheartedly agree. The purpose of the city government is to service residents and uplift all, all of us, not just the select few. That includes protecting those who have suffered most during the current and ongoing pandemic. I fully support implementing differential water rates, specifically the Our Water Tucson proposal, option number four. For those whose primary concern is about money and cost of service, I am disappointed. There is no price that can be put on the most essential resource for the most vulnerable. We are experiencing record heat, and the last thing we need to be doing is subsidizing giant pools and lawns in the foothills. Councilmember Cunningham, thank you for taking the lead on this. Councilmember Kazachik, my representative, stop delaying. You may claim that you are undecided, but your latest newsletter may clear where you stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Trace. Naomi Green. Carolyn Campbell.
Yes, Your Honor.
Mayor and Councilmembers, this is Carolyn Campbell, and I live in the city limits. And although I am not a paid speaker, I am representing tonight the Community Water Coalition of Southern Arizona, and I would like to read into the record our statement for this evening. Thank you again for your ongoing discussion about capturing the true costs of providing Tucson water beyond our municipal boundary, and in particular, consideration of differential water rates. With our letter, we attached numerous articles about the dire state of water resources in the West, and particularly the Sonoran Desert, due to our current mega-drought, further exacerbated by the drastic effects of climate change. The result is that the safety of our groundwater, Tucson's Plan B for our future water security, is seriously jeopardized in the Tucson Valley, while recharged CAP water migrates north, migrates northward in the Ever Valley. We cannot assume that we have an unlimited supply of reliable renewable water. Our time is up. Old, outdated models need to be recalculated and new projections developed. All of this would seem to point to restricting water hookups. However, the city of Tucson has been serving water to customers that, if they were to request service now, would be outside of the Tucson service area. Recouping some of those costs now with higher rates for those customers in unincorporated Pima County, who by and large use more water than city customers, is a prudent thing to do. However, we feel that action on this item now should only be the first step in cost recovery. As we have repeatedly requested, a cost-benefit analysis for, analysis for all Tucson water customers should also be done after adoption of differential rates. It will show lift costs and other higher infrastructure costs, and therefore, water service charges may need to be further adjusted. As we have previously recommended, any fees generated by differential water rates should be utilized within and by Tucson Water for the one-time elimination of debt attributed to COVID-19, the assistance of any low-income Tucson water customer, the implementation of low-impact design green infrastructure with special emphasis on areas suffering extreme heat island effects, and the ongoing operation and maintenance expenses. We cannot emphasize enough the importance of minimizing and mitigating the dire effects of climate change as soon as possible. We need to do more. Finally, we continue to recommend that providing water service to all properties because they sign a pre-annexation development agreement, or PATA, is not warranted. because they sign a pre-annexation development agreement, or PATA, is not warranted. A discussion refinement of this policy should be done after a cost-benefit analysis is done. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Carolyn. Um, thank you. I, um, got word from the, uh, city clerk's office that Roxana Valenzuela is now available. Roxana Valenzuela?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Roxana, uh, Valenzuela. I'm a Ward Five resident. I'm not a paid speaker. I live and work at Casa María Catholic Worker Community, and my job is to fight for social justice. Um, for the last year and a half, we saw the brutalization of poor people by a virus. And the represent- representatives of unincorporated residents want to talk about their water rates being raised as divisive and unfair when they don't even pay city taxes. Uh, I support our Water Tucson's three goals, and there is no other way to say this, but to cancel the pandemic water bill debt, lower water bills, uh, for low-income families, including those in the unincorporated areas, and invest in climate resiliency. If we don't raise the unincorporated rates by forty percent and turn around and use those revenues to cancel pandemic water bill debt and to lower water bills for the low-income families inside and outside of the ci- city limits, then like, what equity have we been hearing about? What equity have we been talking about? We need to raise the rate forty percent, then we will have the power to reduce a bit of the inequality in our communities. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. Margot Garcia?
No, Your Honor.
Jessica Baxley?
Yes, Your Honor.
Ms. Baxley?
Can I be heard? Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you for allowing me the time to speak on this important subject. My name is Jessica Baxley. I currently live in, uh, Ward Three of Tucson within city limits. I'm an unpaid speaker and I do volunteer for a social justice group. And I am coming to you, imploring you to support the R Water Tucson decision of using number four, the forty percent differential rate. The reasons why I agree with this are the fact that, currently speaking, within the large cities in the state of Arizona, Tucson is the only city that does not charge a differential rate to customers outside of the city limits. Um, which means that the taxpayers of the city of Tucson are left paying and offsetting anything that is not paid by the fees for water usage. And so while I do understand that there is a difference in cost, depending on what, how much water you use, that does not offset all the fees and anything not offset is paid for by Tucson City payers. As we know, this has been a very difficult last couple of years with pandemic, and we do know that there are, as already been stated, over fifteen thousand families that are behind. And I propose that the mu- money that could be generated from this, approximately twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven million, sorry, if we do the forty percent, could be used to cancel the pandemic water debt, lower bills for low-income families, as was already stated, for both inside and outside of city limits, and also to make sure that we are on a good path when it comes to climate resiliency. I just was up at Horseshoe Bend about two, three weeks ago, and it's amazing how low the Colorado River is. We cannot sustain if we continue how we are. And there isn't a lot of numbers out there that will support the fact that where you have differential and different things that are done to control sprawl and to promote conservation, you actually have seen less water usage and certain cities are now using waters at rates of the, like twenty years ago, even though the population is quite a bit larger. Our, the population between Tucson and Phoenix is expected to double within 2040. So we need to get on this. We need to encourage equitable payments, equitable usage, equitable fairness. As has already been stated, people outside of the city limits tend to use more water. Often that is grass, pools, things like that, that a lot of Tucsonans are not able to afford. Excuse me, sorry, just one moment there. Can you guys still hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Come to a conclusion.
My phone's sound like it dropped. My apologies. As I stated earlier, um, we are literally the only city that does not. Um, Chandler, Flagstaff, Glendale, Scottsdale, Tempe, Yuma, all do. Somewhere, some upwards of fifty, the lowest being fifteen percent. So I have heard, um, talk of taxation without representation. This is something that is practiced readily in the state of Arizona and is also being deemed legal by the state of Arizona. Another thing to mention is that, right now, about thirty-five percent of the current, the county residents living outside of, live outside of Tucson. Maricopa County, where it's fifty percent water differential, it's about seven percent. That's a lot of money that's left on the table, money that pays for the upgrading, the repairs that it takes to get the water out to the more nor- northern areas. City of Tuss- Tucson should not be paying that. The residents of Tucson should not be paying that. And instead, we can use that money to ensure that people have water, to ensure that nobody is without because they could not afford it in these harrowing times. And on that note, I'd also like to add that our emergency fund that we have for low income is only available to homeowners, whereas most low-income are renters. And so being able to fortify that fund would allow more people to be able to receive help.
All righty, Ms. Bax- Baxley, uh, come to a conclusion within the next, uh, ten seconds because, um, we want to make sure have everyone, um, give everyone-
Respectively, as I, respectfully, I give the floor to other people who would like to speak. I would just like to remind everybody that we are the only city that's not doing this. And the city, the residents of the city of Tucson pay whatever is left to be paid. That is not equitable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Baxley. We do have, we are over time, over the, um, time allocated, but we do have one, two, three, four other speakers, so, um, I'd like to entertain that we just finish the speakers that we have for this item. Joe Sillins, it's Joe Sillins.
Yes, Your Honor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Joe Sillins. I am not a paid speaker and I'm a resident of Ward Six. And I'm calling to urge Mayor and Council to adopt Option Six of the differential rate structure, which would re-increase rates by five percent for the first usage block, ten percent for the second usage block or tier, and fifteen percent for the third tier usage block. We are, as many other callers mentioned, in a dire situation here in the Southwest in terms of water. And this rate structure would provide an incentive for Tucson wa- water customers outside city limits to use less water, generate some additional revenue, and would not play, place an onerous burden on low-to-moderate income customers outside city limits. While much of the messaging making the case for differential water rates centers around wealthy homeowners and developers in outlying areas, there are many communities in unincorporated Pima County who use Tucson water and are not wealthy and are in fact, uh, uh, members of poor to middle-income households. These working-class families would be hit hard by a steep, flat increase to their water rates, particularly during this time of hardship for so many. Uh, a number of years ago, I used to work for Pima County Department of Community Development, and we served communities like Corona de Tucson, Ajo, along the Ajo Road Corridor, the Cardinal Valencia area, Little Town, Drexel Heights, and parts of the Summit neighborhood, which are all in unincorporated Pima County and are also, uh, customers of Tucson Water. Uh, those families, many of the families in those communities are low to moderate income and are a structure, are struggling to put food on the table and keep their ATs running and would be hard-pressed to afford a thirty to fifty percent across-the-board increase in water bills. Many low to moderate families, uh, moderate-income families in those communities would not qualify for low-income rate payer assistance or might not apply for those pro- programs, and these families would suffer. A flat ri- rate increase is akin to a flat tax, and flat taxes are aggressive, hitting those at the bottom of the pay scale the hardest, with the exception of those at the very bottom, who would qualify for rate payer assistance program, uh, expansion. I support the effort to dramatically expand low-income rate payer assistance. I support the creation of policies that encourage confris- conservation of water across the Tucson Water Service Area. I support policies that increase costs of connecting new developments to water infrastructure, particularly in out- outlying areas, creating sprawl and necessitating the extension of water mains into the surrounding desert. I support the allocation of increased water revenues to fund climate-resilient infrastructure and green infrastructure. These goals will require distinct policies, and I urge the Mayor and Council to pursue policies to address these issues. I would like to caution against the conflation of a variety of issues, such as sprawl, excessive water use by wealthy homeowners, excessive profits for developers, shared tax revenues and incorporation, and fighting poverty as a justification for a differential rate increase. I would like to caution against the use of differential rates as a hammer to push communities to incorporate into the city of Tucson. I would also like to caution against using differential rates on a small segment of the ra- of the ratepayers who don't have a say in Tucson Water Governance alone to fund ambitious social programs called for mainly by city residents. These rate assistance programs are sorely needed, and I think we should all come together to help our neigh- neighbors who are buried underwater debt. Tucson Water customers living outside city limits use more water on average than those within the city. A targeted-tiered differential rate structure can provide an incentive to conserve, for, can provide funding for needed low-income rate payer assistance and debt forgiveness, as well as funding for climate-resilient infrastructure. A targeted rate increase could also be designed to protect working-class families from excessive rate shock while charging more to higher-use customers who can better afford them. The climate crisis is upon us, and the future of our city, our region, and our environment depend on taking urgent concerted action on behalf of the entire Tucson Water rate base.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sillins. Daniel Preston?
No, Your Honor.
Janelle Livingston?
Yes, Your Honor. Hello?
Yes.
This is Daniel Preston.
Hi, okay, Daniel, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you for having me on this evening. I just want to, um, point out something for reference here. Um, I'm a member of the Onotum Tribe, the Nation, and also a Legislative Council member, but also represent the Sanavir District and, um, also on the Water Resource Committee at the Nation level under the Legislative Council. Um, so I want to just mention for reference, um, in nineteen seventy-five, the United States filed a lawsuit on behalf of the Papago tribe, now the Onotum Nation, against the city of Tucson, state of Arizona, Asarco, and other mining companies, Farmer Investment Company, FICO, and others who pump groundwater from the Santa Cruz Basin. The Santa Cruz Basin is the aquifer that lies beneath the Sanavir Indian Reservation in Tucson. Another lawsuit was filed at the same, on behalf of the Sanavir Reservation, Alatis, for the same reason. These lawsuits became known as U.S. versus Tucson. In nineteen eighty, the Alati lawsuit was dropped by the Justice Department because it was determined that the Alatis' interests were represented by the tribe. The U.S. claimed that the U.S., that those defendants had depleted the Sanavir groundwater table by their increased pumping and sought to stop the pumping from the Sanavir portion of the Santa Cruz Basin. Indian water rights derived from Aboriginal ownership or from U- U.S. government through treaty or federal law, the Winter's Doctrine, a nineteen oh eight U.S. Supreme Court case provides for the reserve water rights tribes have water rights based on the future needs of the tribes with, with a priority date of when a reservation was established. The case had not been made for groundwater in U.S. versus Tucson would have tested whether the Doc- Winter's Doctrine applied to groundwater. In nineteen eighty, the parties to U.S. versus Tucson began out-of-court negotiations to settle the case. The cost of the lawsuit and the, and the, uh, length of time for the, for the case to be decided are cited as reasons for settling out-of-court. The Papago tribe established the Papago Water Commission to participate in the negotiations. These negotiations resulted in nineteen eighty-two Southern Arizona Water Rights Settlement Act, passed by Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And, um, I understand too that the, uh, two thousand seven interim guidelines, um, regarding the CAP and the drought contingency plan that, um, we have heavily been involved with, um, here at, um, the Sanavir District. So with that, um, I understand, um, I know that, uh, when the Biden administration came in and, uh, this was a federal memorandum for tribal consultation. So, um, at the state level, I'm just wondering how it's going to impact and, um, and, uh, because Sanavir does use the, uh, the water from Tucson. Um, so that is, that is my statement, or have those consultations been, um, afforded to the, uh, to the Nation? Or in, in our respect, the Sanavir District, which, uh, we live here, uh, just south of Tucson. So, um, anything that has happened in and around the Tucson active management area has a very, uh, is very impactful to, um, the, the Sanavir community and which is part of the Onotum Nation. So, um, I would like, um, more, if there was a comment period that, uh, that we can be afforded as, uh, as such for, because we're going to be impacted, um, financially or however, um, it, it, it is going to impact us. Um, but, uh, we've been fighting for water. We, um, we actually are a tribe that, it, it, um, we pray for water. Water is very, uh, water is life. Water is the essence of who we are. And, um, so it's a very valuable, very important resource. So thank you again for, uh, hearing me this evening and having me. That's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Preston, and we're going to have one more person that is on the list to speak, and then I'll have Mr. Tamir clarify the impact on, um, on the Nation and tribal lands, okay? So, uh, please hold on, don't leave us, and, uh, we care about making sure that we, um, provide you assurances of the water rights that the Onotum Nation has. So our last speaker is Faith Ramon.
No, Your Honor, but, uh, you previously called Janelle Livingston, and she is on.
All righty, Janelle Livingston?
Are you there?
Yes, we are.
Hello, are you there?
Yes, we are, Ms. Livingston. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, um, Mayor and Councilmen. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Um, I am not a paid, um, I am actually a Pima County resident. Um, I have recently, oh, I was born and raised in Tucson. My mom was born and raised in Tucson. Uh, I have just recently moved back to my childhood home, which is located in the Cassis Adobes area. I've listened to this, um, meeting all night, and I hear, um, people talk about, um, raising the rates um, for unincorporated Pima County residents, and I would like to encourage you, um, to vote no and vote that down. Um, they've made comments tonight saying that it's a bunch of rich people basically living up in the foothills. And, um, when my parents, um, bought this- And, um, when my parents, um, bought this house forty-seven plus years ago, they chose to live here because this was the area that was being developed. It wasn't that they weren't part of the Tucson community, but by you increasing rates, my parents were middle class, they worked hard, they didn't have a lot of money, but when I read in the paper what the average, um, city of Tucson water bill is, that isn't even close to what my, our water bill has been for the last forty-six years. On average, our bill is well over a hundred dollars a month, and in the summer it's up to somewhere sometimes at six hundred dollars a month. So I encourage you to not do that increase because currently I have taken control of this house and I am a teacher and people work hard and we shouldn't be punished for living outside the city limits. And I just encourage you to vote no, and I won't take any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Livingston. I just want to make sure that, um, we have everyone, um, that has been called. It also worth the carryovers of people that, um, had signed up to speak on the eighth. All righty, so, um, I'd like to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
So that there's a motion in a second and, um, any discussion on that on closing the public hearing? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. I'd like to first and foremost clarify with Mr. Tamir, um, the concerns that Mr. Preston presented to us and clarify what, um, what the rights in terms of water rights that tribal lands and our Tonotam Nation have and if they will be impacted by this decision.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, um, I'm glad to address that. With respect to the issue of differential rates, um, differential water rates would not apply to any Tucson Water Services, which could be direct or indirect, uh, to the Tonotam Nation or to the Pasquayaki lands. We have intergovernmental agreements between the city and, and both the Tonotam and the, and the Pasquayaki that govern, you know, wh- when, uh, they're using their own water rights or when they're using water provided by the city, and often there's a pricing component in that. So, um, there would be no cost impact to, um, the nation or to the Pasquayaki tribe. And, uh, as a further point with regard to the Southern Arizona Water Rights Settlement Act that was mentioned in the, in the caller's comments, uh, one of the key components of that is a portion, a significant portion of the wastewater effluent generated from within the municipal area. The first twenty-eight thousand two hundred acre feet of the wastewater generated from Tucson goes to a portion of, of the, of the Southern Arizona Water Rights Settlement Act, and, um, that is largely generated from within the city. There are portions of the county that contribute to that, but, uh, much of the area where Tucson Water serves in the county does not contribute to the settlement of the Sorsa. So, um, their, their water rights are made whole through the city and through our collaboration and agreements, and there would be no cost impact to them or their customers.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Tamir. All righty, we have a closed public hearing. What is the council's pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Cunningham?
After reviewing all the testimony from both last week and this week and not rehashing what I said last week, there's a few things that stick out, especially from today. Um, I want to be really clear that I agree that the cost of service is necessary, is an important piece to this, but it's not why we're doing the differential rate. The cost of service isn't, has, this has always been a policy decision for me. This has always been a, and, and when we talk about equa, equitability, when we talk about equity, when we talk about equality, all those things, I think the, the biggest problem we're having is that in all the communication that we've had regarding this subject is that everybody's version of equity is different. Everybody has their own version of what it is. So I want to lay it out really clear because there's a couple of things that just kind of ate at me with the comments. Um, one is you don't have to pay it. How is, how can you say this is taxation without recognition when you don't have to pay it? If you incorporate or annex in the nearest community, you don't have to pay it. You don't. It's not a choice. It was your choice to stay out of the city and it was, it was your choice, uh, to, uh, not partake in, 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 in city services and want to be part of a city, and that's okay, but we're the ones serving you water. We're the ones who backstop the utility. We backstop the utility, period. When they issue a bonds, it's our credit rating. Anything the utility does, we backstop. And, and, and I think that's being lost in this discussion. The other thing that I think is being lost in this discussion, and I think it's important to point out, is that we can't do different, um, uh, conservation programs outside the city that we can inside the city. We can adjust our zoning, we can adjust our building permits, we can adjust all kinds of different things inside the city, uh, that are outside of this, the, the water department that helps conserve water. We can't do that outside of the city. That's one of the pieces that's in play here when we're talking about conservation. I think it's been very much overlooked when we're talking about a policy discussion, and this is a policy. This isn't about cost of service. This is about straight up the truth. Finally, it's really important to know that differential rates occur across the country. They occur in different cities across the country, all over Arizona, and I have been very transparent from the beginning. I appreciate our water coming at us at forty percent. That's, hey, good for you guys, but we can't do that to folks right away. You just heard a lady say that she pays six hundred dollars a month sometimes and i- if, if we drop forty percent on her, her bill would go up two hundred and forty dollars a month. And I don't want to do that to anybody, and I've said that from the beginning, I don't want to do that to people. I've already said that. I think we have a program at a ten, twenty, thirty, and option seven, that for ninety percent of our customers, it'll be less than ten dollars a month, and for over seventy percent of our customers, the delta will be four dollars and eighty-eight cents a month. One of the things that wasn't pointed out is that city residents, and this wasn't in the paper the other day. The paper said that there would be an increase on option seven, an average increase of six dollars and seventeen cents a month, but that doesn't take into account the dollar thirty extra that city residents already pay. Counter, a lot of people who've been online and been watching this don't realize that city residents on an average ten CCF water use already pay extra. And that brings me to the next part, which again keeps getting, no one talked about it tonight, which was really frustrating, and that is that by living in an, in an unincorporated municipal, uh, non-municipal area, the way the state legislature divvies up our funds costs our region as much as ninety million dollars a year, ninety million dollars. At some point, that isn't fair. Another thing that's going on is, and I explained this last week, I'm going to do it one more time. In two thousand eighteen, Pima County retired debt service on road bonds. Now they just collect that tax. They collect it from residents of Sarita, they collect it from residents of Marana, from Oro Valley, and the city of Tucson, yet they spend zero, not one penny of it, in those towns. They collect sixty-two percent of that money to the tune of over sixty million dollars from the people in those towns, and they spend none of it in those towns. They spend it to pave roads in Catalina foothills, Tanca Verde Valley, Vale and Corona de Tucson. And, and they can do that, but they should give a little bit back to the towns, and they don't. So for me, what, what, what am I supposed to do as a person elected by the people of Tucson? Am I supposed to say, oh, hey, that's okay? That's what I'm standing up for. So I know I haven't made a lot of friends in this, but I really think that it's important to explain this cost of service piece. There are philosophical things. I've just explained the CAGO, I've just explained the state shared revenues, but at the end of the day, the city and, and the county have to be partners. We need to be partners, but we can't be partners the right way if the county's going to continue to provide municipal services where they're not supposed to. They have to stay in their lane and be the government we need them to be. We need them to catch up and fill the gaps that the state shuns us on. The state screws up our region, we need the county to step up there, and instead they're busy trying to overstep what we do. According to the state statutes, according to the case law, according to everything, we are allowed to quote glean a profit, end quote. It's in the state law. We're allowed to do this. There's no argument there. The ci, the county's going to try to take us to court, that if the county didn't really want it to be the regional water authority, we would have elected a countywide water board in nineteen eighty. We didn't. There are all kinds of different, like, nuances that are into, uh, how much more it costs in the city and out of the city, but imagine trying to, just on a burst pipe, imagine if you're the water department, how much easier it is to work with the Tucson City Streets Department than any other jurisdiction at all. Just think about that. There are all kinds of different juris, inter-jurisdictional things, and if we do a cost of service analysis, which I think we should, um, at some point, you'll see all that. Let's remember this money will benefit both out county and in county. What I'm, what I'm proposing is, one, first of all, forty-six percent of the debt on twenty-nine percent of the accounts, but forty-six percent of the total debts is outside the city limits. So when we're talking about giving relief to poor families, that's, that's part of what this money's do, but we're not going to use all this money just for that. That's only about one-third. The main, the other one-third is going to go to, uh, climate resiliency and water sustainability in, in the form of recharge, reclamation, and, and, um, recharge and reclamation projects, um, and retention projects, and most of those are probably going to be outside the city limits. I want to duplicate the Santa Cruz Heritage Project in the Rolito. I think it's something we can do with some of this money long term. That's outside the city limits, and it would be the lion's share long term if you really think about it. So when we're really talking, let's talk about what this is really all about. I've said from the beginning, though, this is a policy decision for me. This is about the county's kind of almost refusal to do the right thing by the cities, the citizens of Tucson, and I wanted to stand up for them, so I did. I have a motion prepared, and I'm going to make it now because I don't want to beat around the bush about where I'm at. I've now heard all the testimony. I want to say for the record that I am more than happy to meet with the, uh, Board of Supervisors face to face at any time, uh, and I am more than happy to, uh, well, you'll see in the motion what else I'm more than happy to do. First of all, I move that the mayor and council adopt ordinance one-one-eight-four-six adopting differential water rate for customers in unincorporated county, unincorporated Pima County, but with the following conditions. A, the rates in the ordinance shall be adjusted to, to incorporate option seven as set out in the mayor and council communication and agenda materials. B, the option seven rates will take effect on December first, twenty-twenty-one. C, all additional revenues that will be generated by the adopted differential rates will be retained entirely within the utility and will be used for the following three purposes. One, infrastructure maintenance upgrades to enhance water delivery from the city limits to outside the city limits. Two, climate resiliency and water sustainability for recharge, retention, and reclamation projects primarily outside the city limits and enhancing tree canopy throughout the entire Tucson Water System. And three, financial resiliency in the form of expansion of the low income program and a one-time paydown of eligible delinquent accounts that have been negatively impacted by COVID-nineteen. By this motion, the mayor and council find that implementing the rate structure under option seven results in reasonable differential rates and advances critical policy considerations, including the rate structure supports and rewards annexation corporation providing economic benefit and increased state share revenues to the region. The rate structure recognizes that the city as owner of Tucson Water bears and bears financial risks and liabilities that are not shared by the unincorporated county residents, uh, including the city's financial backstopping of the utility. The rate structure promotes environmental sustainability and water conservation, particularly in areas outside the city limits where the city has limited powers to promote those interests. And four, the rate structure is common among Arizona municipal water providers of similar policy reasons. I further direct staff to complete a broad cost of service analysis that is based upon the rates in option seven, and further consider the economic environmental benefit to the region, considers annexation and incorporation, and recognizes that as the owner of the utility, the city bears risks and liabilities that the county does not. And I have sent this, um, to the clerk and he can circulate it in written form, but that's my motion, and it covers the cost of service piece. We're going to do the analysis. We'll probably get it back before anybody has to pay the new rates, but I want to be clear, that doesn't matter. This is a policy decision, and I wanted to be clear about that. This is a policy decision based on the city backstops the utility, the city owns the utility, the city is the store to the utility and the water, uh, and the, and our, basically our water supply, and we've been very good stores of it.
All righty, that is in the form of a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
All righty, um, there's a motion in a second and, um, council member Ulrich, you do have your hand up. You want to go ahead and, um, make your comments or observations or questions? Oh, you mute it yourself?
If the clerk could circulate that by email to us, um, in writing, I think that would be helpful, but I was taking notes and I, I, the, the motion reflects, uh, and addresses many of the questions and concerns that I have had, and, um, particularly, I, I think for, for me, the notion that, um, we would take action that's arbitrary and unfair, um, really concerned me, and I, I think that, um, it's so important to emphasize that what we are doing and what we have done for decades now, um, and I think done it well, is to, um, offer stewardship of water resources in this area. It is about serving water, but it's also about managing water resources, and we have, uh, really, I think, an incredible track record of collaboration, including the Pima County and Tucson Water and Wastewater Plan and Service Area Map, which we actually developed in concert with, uh, our colleagues, uh, at the county level. I could recount many, many instances where I think we demonstrate that we recognize that we share a water resource and we share this valley and this aquifer, and so we will not, I will not, and I don't believe this body, uh, make any decisions that are not based on what we need to do in our understanding to better manage very scarce and jeopardized water resources. So that's number one. Uh, number two, there are differential rates in our system already, and, um, as council member Cunningham pointed out, residents, only residents within the city of Tucson currently pay thirteen cents per CCF more than customers outside the city limits. Why is that? Because that was a mechanism that we could deploy to raise necessary funds to enhance green infrastructure projects, and there was not a huge outcry, I don't think, um, from the Board of Supervisors at that time. I don't think there was a huge outcry from residents of the city of Tucson saying, that's not fair, why are we the only ones? There's an urgency, and I believe we all share it, inside the city, outside the city. I also believe that the motion does something very important, which is keep the revenues within the water utility, and I agree with the speakers that we need to be very explicit about the plans that we will implement to meet the objectives, uh, reflected in the motion. Infrastructure, climate resiliency, and financial relief. Um, as council member Cunningham noted, we have, um, delinquent accounts right now, probably largely driven by COVID. Forty-six percent of the dollars in, in that delinquency, forty-six percent are with accounts outside the city limits. Um, and so there are many ways to slice and dice the numbers to make this look to make this look unfair or make it seem that, you know, it's an arbitrary act. It is not, in my view. And the reason I support this action is because I believe we have a proven track record. And even a recent national award just announced this evening for our water stewardship. And I could recount many, many instances where Tucson Water, not only for our own customers, but in partnership with the other water utilities and the native nations in this valley, believe it's the right thing to do. I also believe that we owe it to every Tucson Water customer to come back with a very clear plan for reinvesting these funds in the stated goals so that that's very transparent and accounted for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ulrich. Vice Mayor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I first wanted to just acknowledge everyone, as I always try to do for your advocacy, regardless of where you sat on this issue. We had such great feedback from all perspectives. I took tons of notes. And I'm just really grateful for everyone who was engaged in this conversation and provided that feedback directly to us. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I do wanted to think about how I could specifically contribute some of my expertise to this conversation because I agree with what a lot of my colleagues have already stated. So I did spend a number of years working in the space of stormwater management from a precision technology perspective. And I remember when I entered that field, I was told that the next frontier in water conservation was really stormwater management. And that was looking at agriculture in the Midwest, not even looking at the desert when we're dealing with droughts and climate change. So that really resonated heavily with me. And I will be honest, this was not a cut-and-dry decision for me at all. It was something that I have really wrestled with and did my due diligence and talked to people that I really admire. And I got some great advice from a prominent business leader who said to look five to 10 years out and look back and say, "Was this the right decision to make?" And in doing that, with the conditions that we're facing right now and looking at drought contingency plans, I think that every tool that we have to promote conservation is going to be the right decision five to 10 years from now. And so I think water conservation also, from a business perspective, is going to be key for us to be able to continue to thrive economically. I think it sends a signal to the business community that we are prepared to continue to sustain our economy and even grow because we're taking this very seriously. So from those two perspectives, I feel comfortable moving forward, as my colleagues have described. I do appreciate the fact that we're going to go ahead and move forward with the cost of service study if we vote that way tonight. I think that that's very important, as well as getting better refinement on, as Councilmember Ulrich said, how we're going to spend those funds, getting a little bit more clarity and accountability on how those funds are going to be spent. I would definitely appreciate, as Councilmember Cunningham said, an opportunity to meet with the Board of Supervisors and have those conversations that we've been wanting to have anyway. I think that's incredibly valuable. And ultimately, as Carolyn mentioned, continuing to look for those opportunities to innovate and look at our whole structure and see where we can really precisely apply different policy changes that will help drive conservation. Because I think this is one of many things that we're going to have to do as we continue to deal with this drought and climate change. So those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Wonderful comments, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kozachek?
Thanks. And I agree with the Vice Mayor that I've been taking a lot of notes and listening to a lot of perspectives on this. And I appreciate much of the advocacy, Paula, that you put into this. I have some questions for staff. And I have some... I mean, even as I'm beginning to speak, to one of the callers' points, I'm still not on either side of the fence. I've got some questions, and that's a legitimate place to be. Every water issue that we face has got its complexities. I do not believe that payback for paygo should be something that drives our water policy. Number one. Number two. Yeah, the courts have told us that we have a right to glean a profit. But in that same decision, they said that that profit has to bear a rational nexus to the cost of delivery. So I mean, it's not as though we can just go out and roll a dice and come up with a number. And I know, Paula, that's not what you did. But square in the circle on both of those comments, I think, is important. I ask the question, this is for, I guess, either Chris Avery or Mike Rankin. I ask the question for clarification on the state statute that very clearly says that before a municipality proposes a water rate increase, it must, quote, "prepare a written report" or supply data supporting the increase. And this is what the report is supposed to contain. Data shall include cash flow projections that indicate all anticipated revenues from residential and non-residential customers and overall expenses for providing the water or wastewater services. The answer I got was that, oh, the court made it so that we don't have to do that. I don't believe that. And I'd like a better explanation as to why we would not have to go through this statutory process before we implement... Or before... Well, I've got a second question with respect to timing. But answer that one first, please.
Sure. Councilmember Kozachek, members of the Mayor and Council. What the statute requires is the filing of the data and a report relating to the proposed increase. And that was, in fact, provided in connection with the proposed increase. And you'll recall that the council proposed a range, a potential range of differential rates everywhere from zero up to fifty percent. And the report on these options and the data showing the revenues to be generated from them and the cash flow that they would generate with respect to the overall cost of operating the system were made available to the public. What the statute doesn't require is a direct cost of service analysis that determines what the cost of service to individual areas within the service area may be. And any questions about what the statute requires in terms of showing what's a reasonable rate or not are informed by the court decisions that have been referred to here, which make it clear that, at the end of the day, a differential rate can be structured such that the rate for residents of the city can be based on cost of service, whereas the rate based for customers within the unincorporated areas can be a rate above that, essentially the definition of a differential rate.
And you're comfortable with our announcing a rate, a specific rate increase prior to our having done that analysis from a legal perspective?
I am because the notice of intention said that the Mayor and Council is going to consider a differential rate anywhere within this range. And here's the data in terms of the impact of those different ranges, different options, including the Option 7 that's now part of the motion. So it was captured within the scope of the data that was presented. As I understand the motion, that it would include direction to staff to follow up with a broad cost of service analysis to make that available to the council to bring it back for your further consideration at a later time.
So if we find, after having done that, a cost of service analysis, that the proposed rate increases are indefensible from that perspective, would we roll back the rate increases?
So the Mayor and Council ultimately is a legislative body in determining a rate, including a differential rate, is not limited to establishing that rate based only on a cost of service. The legal requirement is that the rate, any rate, any water rate, whether it's in the city or outside the city, is reasonable and just. And the courts have recognized that differential rates, which, as some have already mentioned, are quite common, not just in Arizona, but across the country. And as a result, there's a fair amount of case law out there about what a reasonable rate, including a reasonable differential rate, can be and what it can be based on, have taken into account some of the very considerations that were cited in the motion. The fact that the municipal water company, Tucson Water, is owned by the city, so the city bears certain risks and liabilities that are different and that are not borne by the unincorporated county or its customers, et cetera. So there are justifications beyond adjust the cost of service that make a differential rate defensible.
Fair enough, fair enough. When we do water rate increases, just in the normal course of business, we give a specific... When we're giving notice of the rate increase, we give a specific number. Are you comfortable that we have satisfied the notice requirement by having given a broad range as opposed to what we're doing tonight?
Councilmember Kozachek, I am. And in fact, I do remember at least one instance where, for just a more routine type of rate increase, where we gave a notice of intention of a higher number than what the council ultimately adopted. And the statute is specific. In the process that you've already cited under Statute 9511.01, you do your notice of intention. You provide your report that people can see about what the potential rates are that are being considered. And then it says, after holding at least a public hearing on that notice of intention and the rates that have been published, that the governing body, the Mayor and Council, may adopt the proposed rate component, fee or charge increase, or any lesser increase.
Okay, fair enough. And I'm not trying to be... You know, I'm just... These are serious questions. And I'm not just trying to drill you.
Absolutely. They are very important questions.
Another area that's bothering me is that the direction we give to SEWAC, which is made up of some pretty sharp hydrological professionals. And we say to them that when they review a proposed rate increase, it specifically says the water revenue requirements are to be kept to the absolute minimum necessary. That's what we ask of SEWAC. Now, I know they're not a regulatory body or anything like that. But it... You know, I'm just telling you. It bothers me that we are going forward with a rate increase that doesn't seem to be consistent with that direction. Another thing that bothers me about this is we have sort of an implicit contract with our existing customers. And the arguments about sprawl and all of that, those customers are already there. I would feel a whole lot more comfortable from the standpoint of, let's address sprawl, if the motion was, we're going to implement a differential rate on all new development. That's the sprawl issue. To implement it on people who are already there and are already paying the rate, that has nothing to do with sprawl. They're there. As far as incorporation is concerned, you know, all of us want the state shared revenues. I don't know that December 1st of this year is going to give jurisdiction... Are people living in unincorporated areas the amount of time they're going to need to really engage those conversations? We've seen four or five different efforts in incorporation in the last few years, and they don't happen in six months. So that's troublesome to me. I do support keeping all the new revenue within the utility. I think we're all in agreement on that. I don't know. I'm interested to hear more comments. I see Richard's got his hand up.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fimbras?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our most precious resource next to our children is our water. When the COVID pandemic started, I was glad to help out our most needy, most vulnerable citizens by getting Tucson Water to initiate a moratorium on shuffling off water to those affected by this pandemic. Our city has followed Pete the Beaks' message in conservation water to the point that there is a usage difference between Tucson Water customers inside city limits and outside the city limits. The cities of Phoenix, Scottsdale, Glendale, Mesa, and others have initiated a similar proposal that Tucson would be the last city in Arizona to do so. The tiered proposal deals with conservation and is intended to help the most needy, most vulnerable in our entire community, both city and county. I'm glad to have a water service study. I am glad that a water service study will be conducted and the proposal in this present form would go into effect in December. As the principal city attorney's memo stated that under June versus the city of Phoenix, 1989, a differential rate would be legal if the Mayor and Council were to allow for sufficient time for all the procedural requirements to be accomplished before the rates is actually assessed to customers, including the furnishing of a cost of service study. This proposal intends to deal with usage, conservation, our climate, and our helping our most needy and vulnerable in our community. With that, I will vote in favor of the 10% tiered rate proposal. A cost of service study is... It needs to be conducted, and it needs to be effective before we implement this by December 1st. As our citizens required from both the city and the county plus SEWAC, the advisory committee has also mentioned that, which is our lead agency watching over water. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbras. I just want to make sure that I add my voice to the discussion. I too agree that the partnership between the city of Tucson and Pima County, specifically the Board of Supervisors that were elected by Pima County residents, which are, by the way, city of Tucson residents. We must continue to work together. And just like family, we sometimes agree, sometimes we don't. But I know that this particular conversation has been happening for the last 40 years, in a way. It really is based on the policy that we want to create. As Mayor and Council, we are stewards of our water resources. And much has changed since the 1970s. And I've said this before, I will say it again. We have to change the course of business as usual. We are living in a mega drought. Climate is changing, and it is affecting the frontline communities, which are seniors and children and low-income communities. Those are the front lines of climate change. And so as the stewards of our water utility and our water resources, Mayor and Council is responsible to make the best decisions available to be able to preserve the water resources, not just for now, not just for our residents now, but into the future. And as the Vice Mayor said earlier, a city without water doesn't exist. And so for so many different reasons, for be able to conserve and protect our water resources into the future, but also for economic development reasons, we have to make sure that the decisions we're making right now are protecting their residents, not just five to 10 years from now, but 50 years from now and into the future. So even though the motion has the cost of service analysis, this is much more based on the climate reality we live in and on the conservation that we have to take. And so, you know, I'll go back to what Vice Mayor Fimbras said earlier today that the Arizona Supreme Court, in response to other cities, city of Phoenix, as was previously said, charges differential water rates, as well as Chandler and Flagstaff and Glendale and Scottsdale and Tempe and Yuma. And they charge flat 40%, 30%, 50% rates across the boards in terms of differential rates. The motion as put forward by Council- The motion as put forward by councilmember Cunningham really sends a conservation signal, and it is reasonable in nature. We have heard the concerns of those that support differential water rates, as well as those that don't. And option seven in the proposal put forward by councilmember Cunningham is reasonable in nature. The Supreme Court said that we have to provide a differential water rate that is reasonable, that we have to provide direction regarding the purposes for which we are using the funds created by differential water rates, and that we allow sufficient time for the procedural requirements to be accomplished before the rate is actually assessed to the customers. We have done our homework. We are providing those three elements that the Arizona Supreme Court requires us to do, and we are being very, very reasonable and sending a conservation signal if we adopt a tiered approach to charging the differential rates, which is ten if you're using one to seven CCFs, and then it moves up to twenty, thirty, and then forty. The more water you spend, the more you pay for it. So in so many different elements, we have worked towards being good water stewards for our entire region and for all of our water customers. We are providing these funds to alleviate those customers that were unable to pay due to COVID nineteen, and so we are forgiving the debt, which forty-six percent of that debt was created by customers in unincorporated areas. We are using the funds for water resource management, for climate resiliency, and for infrastructure reliability. I support the motion as presented by councilmember Cunningham and urge my, the rest of my colleagues to do so as well. Councilmember Kazachik.
Oh, Your Honor.
Councilmember Cunningham, councilmember Kazachik does have his hand up, and he's had it up for a bit, so let's go to councilmember Kazachik and then you, with you, councilmember.
Okay, thanks. Couple more questions. To city attorney, or maybe Tim. There was a question about impact on the tunnel automation land. Pima County owns land, owns property in an, in unincorporated area, obviously. Will this differential rate impact their property and their use of water?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, if, that is a jurisdictional decision between the city and the county that could be considered if an intergovernmental agreement, if you wish to enter into one, the differences with the Posco Yaki and the tunnel autumn, we already have existing agreements that govern pricing. So...
Paul's raised, shaking his head no, but I'll let Paul, when you get the floor, go ahead and answer, because I truly, I don't know the answer to the question. So let me, let me just close up with a couple of comments. First of all, I think that water is an underpriced commodity right now for everybody in this region, not just city Tucson, not unincorporated, but we have a, the price we pay for water, given the scarcity of it and given what's coming, is, is a gift. So I, you know, I'm, that, that's one comment. Secondly, you know, I'm thinking out loud, this is, this, this does send, I, I don't agree with all the reasons for the motion. Like I said, it's, it's not sending a conservation message necessarily, I mean a sprawl message to customers who are already there, but it is sending a sprawl message to new development. And, and for that, I, with that, I, I agree. And for the, for our current customers, reduce your CCF use by one or two CCF a month, and you just made yourself whole. So there is a conservation piece of that. I would like to suggest this, though, and I agree with, with Nikki in the, in the, I think we had, we had a missed opportunity in sitting down with the county. And I, I don't want to sit down with the county and, and just get into a food fight with them about, about differential rates or paygo, but if we could have a constructive conversation with them about incorporation. And, because what we hear from pushback, for instance, when Vail was considering it a couple of years ago, they didn't want to create another layer of government, they didn't want to hire a police force, they didn't want to have a court system, they didn't want, or a jail system, they didn't want to have to go out and do their own fire service. So between the city and the county, who have very robust infrastructures of all those kinds of services already built up, we can send a message to people out in the county who are saying, you don't have to go and do all that stuff, don't reinvent the wheel, we'll set up IGAs with you, we'll help, like we're doing with South Tucson right now, for instance, with trash service, and with some fire service. You know, so those conversations can be had. You don't need to go to the city, or to, not the city, but to the residents of Vail. You don't have to go and get yourself a police force and all those other things, work out IGAs with the city or with the county. It's not another layer of government if you set it up through IGA. So I think we can have productive conversations, and through doing that, generate the state shared revenues that everybody in this region ought to be salivating over. So I'll stop. I know, Paul, you wanted to share some more, some more thoughts.
Real quick, the answer on the tribal piece is, even if the, if there's unincorporate, if there's county-owned land inside the resident, inside resident, tribal land, the tribal...
No, 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 it was county-owned land in unincorporated areas.
Well, then, I, I'm, I'm assuming they, they may have an IGA with us with, with rates that already exist, but if they don't, they're going to pay the new ones. The, the second thing was, was that, I just want to, I want to put this food for thought before we vote. I said this last week, or two weeks ago, and I want to reiterate it now, and that is that there's another piece to this, and that is that now, if, if this does pass, which based on the comments I'm listening to, it may, it may do, we, we're not done yet. We have to go back to work and take a look at well exemptions, well credits, maybe some, some, some lower zoning issues. There's some things out there that are, that, that we can look at now, that we couldn't look at until we actually had a rate. So I want to just put that bug in the air of everybody, because I'm probably going to be talking to you come mid-July about that as well.
Yeah. This is not a conversation that ends tonight. And it's the, it's the same, by the way, with our partners at Pima County. It, it is not a conversation that ends tonight. We continue moving forward and partnering in all, all aspects of services to our, our mutual communities. So with that, there's a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to have the city clerk go to roll call to call the vote.
Your Honor, before I do that, I will read the ordinance by number and title only. Ordinance number one one eight four six relating to water, amending the Tucson Code, Chapter twenty-seven, Water, Article Two, Rates and Charges, Section twenty-seven dash thirty-three, Monthly Potable Water Service Charges by Adding Rates for Tucson Water Customers in Unincorporated Pima County Beginning in Fiscal Year Two thousand twenty-two and Setting an Effective Date. Mick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
I just want to clarify, this is ten twenty thirty.
Right, okay. I suppose.
Mayor Omero?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero, the ordinance one one eight four six passes by a vote of seven zero.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, as was explained in the material, the ordinance was presented, rather than giving you six or seven ordinances, one for each option, we included the ordinance, assuming the highest possible, which was the fifty percent or rate. So that's why I said at the beginning, if it's approved, we will revise the ordinance to be consistent with the direction you've just given, and insert, incorporate the option seven rates that are shown in the tables in the agenda materials and the mayor and council communication. We will also revise the effective date consistent with the direction that was given. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Thank you all for your hard work on this. Thanks, Tim. Item nine?
Public hearing, proposed fee restructuring for development review to support new permitting system, ordinance number one one eight four five.
City manager's communication number one nine seven dated June twenty-second is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed amendments revising the UDC Administrative Manual, Section Four, Development Review Fee Schedule Supplement to the City of Tucson Code, Chapter twenty-three B, Unified Development Code. This fee restructuring proposes a revised fee table in which fees would be assessed according to, one, staff or plan review cost, two, inspection costs, three, public review notification, and four, technology fees. The revised table would consolidate fees from three permitting agencies, fire, transportation and mobility, and planning and development services into a single location according to this structure. The intended outcome is not an increase in fees, but a new structure that is more consistent and transparent for all development-related purposes. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than an hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentation. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests to speak for this particular public hearing?
No, Your Honor.
If not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I ha, I see councilmember Fimbres's hand up.
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, it's the previous one.
I'll knock it off.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance one one eight four five by number and title only.
Ordinance number one one eight four five relating to planning and zoning, establishing and adopting fees for building and development, amending fees charged by the Planning and Development Services Department for Development, Plan Review, Code Review, and Permits to Allow for the Implementation of the New Intergov Permitting System, amending Section Four Development Review Fee Schedule of the Administrative Manual, a supplement to the Tucson Code, Chapter twenty-three B, Unified Development Code.
Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
We need a motion, Your Honor.
Oh, hello. What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, go ahead. Go ahead, Paul.
So, Your Honor, I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
So the motion is to pass and adopt ordinance one one eight four five. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Omero?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Ordinance one one eight four five passes by a vote of seven zero. Item ten?
Public hearing, amendment to building code to require new residential construction to be electric vehicle-ready, ordinance number one one eight four four.
City manager's communication number one nine six dated June twenty-second is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposal for an amendment to the city of Tucson Building Code, requiring the installation of electric vehicle outlet and new, a new one- and two-family residential construction. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour, and speakers are limited to five presentations. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests to speak for this item?
Yes, Your Honor, we have one request. Karen Potter?
Ms. Potter? Is Ms. Potter around, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much for waiting, Ms. Potter.
No problem at all. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. So, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and city of Tucson staff. My name is Karen Potter, and I'm the utility program manager for an organization known as the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, or otherwise known as SWEAP. And we're a regional public interest organization focused on eliminating waste from the power generation and transportation systems in order to save all Arizona's money. We really wanted to thank you, Mayor, for your role in developing and bringing this important action item forward in front of the council today. We wanted to let you know that SWEAP appreciates this opportunity to discuss the city of Tucson's role and efforts in making electric vehicle technology and the benefits that they provide accessible to all Tucsonians. And by providing, by proposing a required installation of EV charging outlets in one- and two-family residential dwellings and town home construction projects, Tucson is well on their way to creating a more equitable transportation system. SWEAP believes this action will support increased adoption of electric vehicles and make them less expensive for everyone in the city in the long run. Increased use of the, of EVs will spur economic development, improve air quality, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. To realize these benefits, however, the city of Tucson must invest in EV infrastructure so that EV charging is more readily available to all of the city's constituents, including those who live in historically disadvantaged communities. Approving an EV-ready building code is critical for ensuring an equitable, accessible, and deployment future for with EV charging equipment. And I just wanted to say also that we are really encouraged by the action and the direction from the city, and we encourage you all to approve this EV-ready building code specifically for one- and two-family new construction residential. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Potter, and, and thank you so much for waiting after that long public hearing. We really appreciate it. Are there any other speakers, Mr. Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Madam Mayor, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion to close the public hearing and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing indicate by saying aye.
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 Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance one one eight four four by number and title only.
Ordinance number one one eight four four relating to Buildings, Electricity, Plumbing, and Mechanical Code, amending the city of Tucson, two thousand eighteen International Residential Building Code, the Tucson Code, Chapter Six, Buildings, Electricity, Plumbing, and Mechanical Code, Article Three, Buildings, Section Six dash thirty-eight, Residential Code adopted by adopting the attached local amendments and setting an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I do see Mr. Rankin's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. During the conversation, discussion of this item during the study session earlier, the vice mayor brought up a point that this is an area where technology is evolving rapidly, and sometimes it, it's, it's hard to keep pace in, with our codes, with the changes in technology, and suggested that we added some language to the standards that would allow for the code to keep up with changes in industry standards as they evolve over time. And we can accomplish that by adding some language to the proposed code amendment. And so the way we would do it would be an exhibit A to the ordinance, which lists the local amendments to the code. We would add the following language to the definition of EV-ready space, which is where the, the current requirement lies in terms of the forty ampere, or two hundred and eight or two hundred and forty volt installation. So we would add the following sentence at the end of that definition. The ampere and volt minimums described above can be modified with administrative approval to allow for advances in industry standards. That's all I have.
Great, Vice Mayor, you're good. Excellent. That's wonderful. Great catch, and thank you for adding that language, Mr. Attorney. What is the council's pleasure? Councilmember?
Karen's got her hand up, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Sulek.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge the hard work of councilmember Durham and the Ward Three council staff, as well as the mayor's office, and the, the good conversation at the table. this afternoon. And with that, I move to pass and adopt ordinance number one one eight four four as amended by the language from the city attorney.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Ulrich.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbris.
Aye.
Ordinance one one eight four four passes by a vote of seven zero. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your hard work on this. Great job. Item eleven.
Public hearing to twenty twenty-two budget is tentatively adopted on June eighth, twenty twenty-one.
City managers communication number two oh two dated June twenty second is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the budget as tentatively adopted on June eighth, twenty twenty-one. The public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than an hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Mr. Clerk, do we have a request to speak?
Yes, Your Honor. It is Joe Aldino.
All righty, Mr. Aldino. Are you available for us today?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mr. Aldino.
Thank you. Before I start, I had actually wanted to comment not just this public hearing, I also wanted to comment on item thirteen on the agenda tonight, which is not a public hearing. But I had requested to speak at call to the audience and during this public hearing. Is it okay if I cover issues of both those things right now?
Mr. Clerk?
I think that's fine, Your Honor.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Go ahead, Mr. Aldino.
Thank you. I'll try not to go over the five minutes, but I was kind of planning on having more time. I am a ward five resident. I'm not a paid speaker. So, my first comment today to be on item thirteen, good evening, Mayor and Council. That's about Central Business District and the G-Plut programs are once again on the agenda, and I want to address the issues, some of them with these problems. We don't have all the time to address all of them. The CBD is supposed to be a slumber blighted area defined by the ARF. While one can find and take pictures of dilapidated buildings in any Tucson neighborhood downtown on Fourth Avenue are not slumber blighted area. With the constant message from the city about how downtown redevelopment is such a success, I defy anyone to characterize them as slumber blight. They should have been removed from the CBD map due to the existing redevelopment, but we must admit that the CBD did not bring an equitable prosperity to the downtown area. Cannot claim both, and attempts to do so ridicule the CBD and G-Plut program. Second, public meetings on CBD expansion were not open dialogue, but exercised in mandatory consent. No questions, even in the presented survey, about whether attendees favored expansion at the CBD or not. The facilitator of those meetings was very nice, but then came before this body and unsurprisingly told him how great their meetings were. We also now had the same person take over the last two committee for equitable housing meetings, effectively acting as chair for three and a half hours. That body took a year to finalize months of staff and is now at five meetings during a housing crisis, and has not gotten around to discussing policy solutions yet. I still have hopes for the group, but due to persistent derailment, my optimism is waning. Third, back to the CBD, really, you convened a, quote, stakeholder group that was supposed to consist of, and again, I quote, "community advocates representing the barrio in adjacent to the central business district," unquote, of which there was one member, I think, who may have qualified. I was allowed to attend one of these stakeholder meetings and just listen in. And while Shannon Rags is a local business owner and a terrific advocate for the Fourth Avenue community, she was vastly outnumbered by developers, architects, and investors in this, quote, stakeholder group. Pursuant to the G-Plut framework on the study session today, Councilmember Ulrich posted, pointed out that the document doesn't specify any consequences if a product is not delivering on benefits, if the benefits presented to justify its incentive. The consequences director copies specified, G-modification of terms, need to be included in the final G-Plut ordinance. Finally, I wish to highlight what appears to be a conflict in the framework. Section two on eligible products, that project says, "successful projects shall execute a community benefit scheme," which sounds like you cannot successfully apply for a G-Plut without a CBA. Section four on community engagement, however, says that neighborhood and community engagement will be part of the G-Plut application review process and may result in execution of a CBA, which sounds nonbinding and open-ended language, meaning if the developer doesn't want to do a CBD, they don't have to do a CBA. Incentives, in short, should be reserved for things there is consensus to incentivize. I know the city's priority is continuing reorganization of the CPD G-Plut program, but I prefer their termination. And in the face of what seems like inevitable continuation by the city, I would urge you to limit the development incentive to affordable housing products or projects the community has approved via CBA, and even consider perhaps a cap on the value of non-affordable housing G-Plut. So, we're not subsidizing more hotels and private equity vultures. All right, I'm moving on to the budget. Thank you for the additional time. I will be brief on it. Unfortunately, there are only a couple things about the budget where I feel I need to modify my comments from last year. First, with the local impacts of our global housing crisis, our housing eviction situation demands even further attention. We know that we receive block grants, housing choice voucher funding, and other HUD and federal funds. Yet of the city's eight hundred and seventy-eight million programmed budget, we're dedicating only three point two million to housing redevelopment, less than four tenths of one percent of that program budget. When this is a council's response to a crisis of homelessness and housing affordability, I have trouble believing that we have the ability to say that this is an issue we're motivated to act on. The statement oft repeated even once tonight in our council, our virtual city council chambers, is that budgets are moral documents, not phrasing the dates back, but at least as far as Dr. King. But even more explicitly, our city budget is a statement of our community priority. It appears from our budgetary priorities, the council concurs to the recent statement made by the Ward Six councilperson that the city and county will not solve homelessness. This is unacceptable. Second, on the budget, well, I believe I have some heavily guarded options. The control section of CPD's budget increases in other sections are still concerning. I can't help but view as you grant a CPD budget of one hundred and sixty-four million dollars, one hundred and forty-five million dollars in program budget. This appears to be another issue. We will get no further movement on this year, but my hope we can do better in the future as we begin budget planning again soon. A couple final budget notes. I know at study session it was said that we're one hundred and thirty-eight minutes spent on public comments for the budget. I assure you, I personally spent more than that amount of time with the budget this year. And finally, Prop one oh one is funding for things, so I think it's appropriate to discuss on the budget. And I believe that firefighting supplies, police, and road funding seems like an increased risk conglomeration. And in my opinion, it would benefit the community being able to vote on those pieces of funding set. Thank you again. Thank you for the time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Aldino. Are there any other requests to speak, Mr. Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Madam Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Fimbris. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion to close the public hearing? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. At this time, we will revisit the regular meeting and convene a special meeting for the purposes of budget adoption. So, meeting is convened. Council will stand in session. Roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Ms. Ulrich.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbris.
Here.
Mr. Kazachik.
Here.
Mayor Romero.
Here. Before we continue, I do see the city managers hand up. Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Mayor. During the study session, Councilmember Fimbris had asked for clarification on the homeless work program. I just wanted to reassure you that I went back and double-checked the amount in the homeless work program fund wasn't in recommended budget, was included in the tentative budget for five days a week. So, that is covered in the budget at your request earlier in the year, Mayor. Just wanted to make sure that you knew that. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. We really appreciate it. All righty, so we move on to item two.
Finance, final budget adoption for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, resolution number two three three one eight.
City managers communication number one eight four dated June twenty-second is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution two three three one eight by number and title only.
Resolution number two three three one eight relating to finance, finally determining and adopting estimates of proposed expenditures by the city of Tucson for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-one, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two, declaring that together said expenditures so constitute the budget of the city of Tucson for such fiscal year, and declaring that the five-year capital improvement program has been approved with the first year of the CIP being adopted as part of the aforementioned budget and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move to pass and adopt resolution two three three one eight.
There's a motion? Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see some hands going up, so I'll go with Councilmember Cunningham and then Councilmember Ulrich.
I want to thank the manager and his team. When I first came onto the council, the responsiveness from staff, the budget planners, wasn't as good. Unbelievable how much that has changed. Thank you.
Councilmember Ulrich.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. And I also want to thank city staff and the city manager. I just also want to note, I know that the American Recovery Plan is a related item of planning and concern. And just to reemphasize, the intent of the Recovery Act funds is really transformative and sustainable investments. And so, every dollar that we spend, whether it's in this budget or in the future, we just want to make sure that we're holding to the framework that Mayor and Council adopted, as well as the tenants that are embodied in the American Recovery Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ulrich. And I just want to add to the work that was put into crafting this budget, and acknowledge the hard work that Mr. Ortega has done, listening to the input of not just the mayor and council, but the community, and really helping Mayor and Council develop the vision of investment in our most vulnerable and needy residents in the city of Tucson while investing in infrastructure and neighborhood road repair. I'm pleased that we're considering this budget tonight. It has taken a lot of work to craft, a lot of minds put together, and the entire team working hand in hand with each other. You know, I've often said, and I think that people remind me of this all the time, that budgets reflect our values and our moral documents. And as we were debating how we were going to put this budget together, we made a conscious choice to address the wages of our workers, of the city of Tucson employees. And we wanted to make sure that we looked at the entire organization and treat each and every one of our employees equally and with respect, and acknowledging that paying our workers market rate in good wages is part of the ethic of, at least myself, and I know my colleagues on the council. We are taking very positive steps forward to focusing on issues of public health and wellness and the safety of our community, of addressing the issues of road repair and neighborhood road repair within our city, of investing in community safety, in programs and services, including expanding our police auditor's office by creating positions of community engagement, of expanding the capacity of our homeless outreach coordinators, of supporting a variety of city services by hiring social workers, program directors, data analysts, in many different positions that will help support investment in reimagining public safety in our community. We have created positions for small business navigators and investing in a resilient recovery, supporting our small and local businesses as they emerge out of pandemic. We've done so much and taken such good, positive steps. But as Councilmember Santa Cruz said earlier, progress moves one step at a time, and sometimes it's very significant steps that move forward to push on the issues that make a difference for the residents and the citizens of the city of Tucson. So, it's steady as we go, and I'm very proud of the decisions that we've done in this year's budget to refocus our energy and investment in the residents of the city of Tucson and the workers of our city. So, thank you, and I appreciate all of the work that has been done. Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't believe that it's already the end of June, and we're starting our next fiscal year here coming in July. I know that staff and all of our offices have put a lot of work into these budget negotiations, and I still feel like we have, yeah, we have a lot of work to do. And part of my earlier comment that sometimes we move slow to go fast, I think we'll continue, you know, working with my colleagues and the city manager for how we do this public input outreach, you know, for the budget that's year-round, and that a lot of our work is doing civic education around the budget and what we're, what, as Mayor and Council were able to do, and how we're going to be matching our investments in the city to the public need. I know that as our office is knocking on doors, the number one issue that comes up is neighborhood residential streets, and what's the investment that the city is doing for that. And then the second one is a lot of, you know, a lot of the impacts around folks experiencing homelessness, you know, and substance misuse. And so, and, you know, just lack of, like, access to employment and employment that pays a fair wage. And so, you know, there's a lot of the safety nets that because of the decisions at the state level and other, you know, jurisdictional, like, processes have really impacted our communities. So, I look forward to continuing to do this work that a lot of it starts with us, you know, as members of our community, of our neighborhoods, putting in the work because it's work, it doesn't happen, you know, overnight. And so, like, you know, I think all of us want to see so much more. But these are just like the incremental steps. And again, I guess just telling folks in our community that I look forward to continuing to listen and have those voices of the folks most marginalized, most vulnerable, the folks who have experienced the most injustice in our community be centered as we continue to have these budget discussions. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. I don't see any other hands up. So, any further discussion from my colleagues? Hearing none. What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move to pass the adopt resolution two three three one eight.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Fimbris.
Aye.
Ms. Ulrich.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Resolution two three three one eight passes by a vote of seven zero. Before I adjourn this special meeting, Mr. Ortega, did you want to include anything?
I do, Mayor. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Number one, I just wanted to say thanks to the council. I think you've demonstrated tremendous leadership this year in going through the process, which started, just to remind you, back in late January, February, and many, many discussions, many conversations. Also wanted to reinforce, I believe, that Councilmember Santa Cruz and several of you have
have really focused on the story budget piece with that $250,000, and I think that that will really help with our engagement in the community and conversations. Also wanted to thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember, I believe it was Lee, excuse me, Vice Mayor, Lee, Councilmember Kazachi, for your town halls. I think the more we get the word out, the better, so thank you all. But I also wanted to take a quick moment, Mayor, and thank the staff. You know, they're the unsung heroes here. I mean, I appreciate the comments for me, but it really is the staff. This was Jeff Yates' first budget. If you remember, we lost our prior CFO, Joyce, and Jeff led the team this year in crafting the budget and doing all the gyrations of that, so I wanted to say thanks to he and the entire staff, because it truly is a team effort, and I just wanted to take a moment and say to them. So thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So I think, did we vote, we voted on this already? Already, good. So this special meeting is adjourned. At this time, we will reconvene the regular meeting. Item 12?
Zoning C92102, Anything Wood, First Avenue, C2 to P1. City managers report ordinance adoption. Ordinance number 11842.
City managers, communication number 185 dated June 22 is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone to Park Industrial to allow for the full operation of a cabinetry and wood shop. The subject site is located at 3550 North First Avenue, approximately 188 feet south of Prince Road and First Avenue intersection on the east side of First Avenue. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance. The zoning examiner recommends approval of P1 zoning subject to conditions. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes, we are.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11842 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11842 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located at 3550 North First Avenue, approximately 188 feet south of the Prince Road and First Avenue intersection on the east side of First Avenue in case C92102, Anything Wood, First Avenue, C2 to P1, and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Yeah, I am pleased to have you, Stephen, here. I've heard some enthusiasm about reactivating this space and having a cabinetry manufacturer in this spot, so thank you for your investment and your selection of this site. And with that, I move to approve the request for original city zoning as recommended by the zoning examiner and pass and adopt ordinance 1182.
11842, is that what you said?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do you second it, Steve?
Yep.
So there is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Well, let's go to roll call.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Mary Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Fembris?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachi?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ordinance 11842 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 13?
Economic Initiatives: Modification of the Central Business District. Resolution number 23354.
City managers, communication number 192 dated June 22 is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution 23354 by number and title only.
Resolution number 23354 relating to redevelopment, modifying the Tucson Central Business District.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, I move to pass and adopt resolution 23354.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Real quick question for, I don't know what it's for. The CBD, the way it's drawn, overlaps some ABOR property and flood control district property. Is that because there are other jurisdictions? Does that matter? What's the impact on our CBD in those two cases?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Kazachi, there shouldn't be any issue with that, mostly because when we look at our, any applications coming forward, again, it wouldn't be related to public-owned properties.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachi?
Aye.
Mick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Fembris?
Aye.
Mary Romero?
Aye.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Resolution 23354 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 14?
Economic Initiatives: Modification of Government Property Lease Excise Tax Incentive Program. Resolution number 23355.
City managers, communication number 194 dated June 22 is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution 23355 by number and title only.
Resolution number 23355 relating to economic development incentives, modifying the government property lease excise tax incentive program.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 23355.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Let's go to roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fembris?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachi?
Aye.
Mary Romero?
Aye.
Resolution 23355 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 15?
Adjournment?
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Wednesday, July 7, at 5:30 p.m. Thank you all so much, and thank you for your hard work, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your week. Thank you. Wonderful work tonight.